This meeting's order and welcome to our informal session and we're going to start off with city manager's briefings, Mr. Duhany.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At this time Nancy Williams from our communications office will come and present a council update on the Rudy Loop project. And the council called through the RFI seeking proposals for the future of the loop. The council announced this actually.
Receive those RFI's to get back to the public and ask the public what they prefer and what their preferences are. At this time, we'll reveal those preferences to the city council.
Oh, that'd be great. Nancy, welcome. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Sti- Mr. Harmeyer, hello, and Mr. Duhany. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and with our project manager from WPA, Ross Cannon, to share with you the results of the community engagement project on Rudy Loop. So by way of a little background, Rudy Loop is an approximately eight acre peninsula that's located adjacent to Rudy Inlet and is an assembly of former retail restaurant hotel businesses and street network that is currently being used primarily for surface parking and circulation. Now, the city desires to transform Rudy Loop into unique development with an emphasis on open space that will attract our residents and visitors and supports surfing, fishing, and outdoor rec. During the 2030 Resort Area Strategic Action Plan process, thousands of citizens weighed in and stated that open space should be maintained in this area. And for your information, the current zoning is OR Oceanfront Resort and it allows for mixed use development with a variety of building types. Here we have a map that shows the parcels that are owned by the city, which are in yellow, and the parcels that are owned by the Virginia Beach Development Authority, which are in orange. So as Mr. Duhany said, the City of Virginia Beach and the Development Authority issued a request for information and ideas in May of 2022 that solicited proposals on how the parcels might be developed. We received four conceptual proposals and they were from Bruce Smith Enterprise, Madison Marquette Development Team, and Amarta Hoffler. We received one, uh, two option proposals from Gold Key PHR, two option proposals from the Virginia Gentleman Foundation, and one proposal from the Virginia Beach Parks and Recs Foundation, or excuse me, Parks and Rec. City Council then directed the city manager to develop a public engagement opportunity that would provide our citizens an opportunity to take a look at the conceptual proposals and provide their comments. So the city staff contracted with WPA to conduct this community engagement and we developed a comprehensive plan. So there were three phases to this plan. The first was a speak up Virginia Beach online survey. The second was one-on-one stakeholder interviews with the Resort Area Neighborhood Association, businesses, city departments, and trade and business associations, as well as open houses, which provided the public an opportunity to come and view the proposals and provide their input. Now I'd like to share with you a little bit of the marketing that we did to make Speak Up VB survey opportunity available to the public. We created posters, as you'll see on the right-hand side, with a QR code that took residents directly to the survey. These were placed in the display boxes on the boardwalk as well as on Atlantic Avenue, and they were distributed to each library and recreation center. We also created four-by-five handout cards, which you'll see at the bottom right, that had a QR code that also led directly to the survey page. We provided these cards to Holiday Lights so that all of the visitors that came to see the Holiday Lights when they purchased their ticket, they received one of these cards so that they could go and take the survey. We also provided each council member approximately 100 cards for you all to pass out to your constituents. We also distributed those cards to the libraries, to the rec centers, and we also created an image of this card that was shown on the kiosks, both at the recreation centers as well as the libraries. We issued press releases. We heavily promoted on social media to include Facebook and Instagram. We did some, we did postings in Nextdoor. We created a Rudy Loop landing page on VBgov.com that contained the links to the complete conceptual proposals where residents could go and take a look at them. And we contacted the Neighborhood Association Civic and Business Stakeholder Groups several times. So the components of the reimagining Rudy Loop survey included the option to either participate online or contact the Communications Department and request a hard copy be mailed to them so that they could fill it out in return. And we did have a few residents that selected that option. We also, as I said, had a link on VBgov.com to Rudy Loop landing page where they could take a look at the proposals. In the actual survey, we did provide the PDF of the map parcels, which I showed you earlier, that was available for our residents to see. And we had a short aerial video of the location that looked at it from all sides. And I'd like to thank our creative services team for getting that footage because it was really beautiful. All right, so I'd like to share with you a little bit about the participation in this survey. So we opened the survey November the 21st, 2022 with an initial closing date of January the 7th, 2023. And when we embarked on this, we all understood that we were getting ready to head into the holiday season and that people would be busy with a lot of holiday activities. And so at the beginning of the year, we took a look and people were still just learning about the survey. So we felt because of that, there was still an overwhelming interest to participate in the survey and that people were continuing to take the survey. We had double-digit participation every day. That we decided to extend the closing of the survey, so it was extended to January the 29th. With respect to our total participation, I think it's important that you understand this so that you understand the volume that WPA has gone through to come up with the summary of the results. We had 12,273 views. That is the number of times that the page was viewed. This is not a unique number, so it wasn't unique visitors, but the page was accessed that many times. We had 4,269 participants. This is unique individuals that interacted with the, with the survey in some aspect. We had 12,404 comments. Those were responses to comment questions that were included in the survey. We had 68,216 responses. These were unique answers to quantitative questions such as multiple choice or ranking. And we had 997 residents subscribed to receive updates on this issue. And so we had a, just wanted to fill in and let you know that the, the survey had a total of 13 questions. So we're very pleased with this response. And to go over the actual results of the survey, as well as the one-on-one stakeholder interviews and the open houses, I'd like to turn it over to Ross Cannon from WPA and he'll share that with you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Nancy. Yeah, this was a great project that we were involved in. Thank you for the opportunity as well. Like Nancy mentioned, this is probably one of the biggest surveys that we've ever had to participate with the results in. But it was a great information that we received and hopefully it'll be very useful for the city. So one of the first questions, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly too in respect with your time. But obviously, these are just results directly from that survey, the first phase. Eighty-four percent of the people that responded to the first question was, do you actually use Rudy Loop now? We got a pretty wide diversity of age groups that responded. In the bottom left, you can see those are actually the unique responses that we got for each of the questions. Some people didn't fill out responses for each and every question, but you can follow along with that as well. So there's a good, broad range of age groups that participated in the survey. Same thing along with how often do you visit Rudy Loop? There was a, there was a pretty broad response. You'll notice that the daily users up in the top at 7%. We're only at, we're only at 7% and that was another reason why we felt it was important to do some of the one-on-one interaction that we did with the community engagement and we actually put on a onsite event down there as well. This next slide is an analysis of the zip codes that were entered to respond to the survey. As you can see, 69% of the zip codes that responded to the survey were Virginia Beach zip codes. And the other down at the, at the bottom of 1,300, it's kind of hard to really decipher whether those could be multiple addresses, they could be secondary homes, vacation homes. But nonetheless, the majority of the participants were from Virginia Beach, Virginia Beach City zip codes. So the next question, the results that we got were, what's the main purpose that you utilize Rudy Loop for now? You can see the majority that we saw too, 77% were accessing the boardwalk or the bike path. 66% for the, going to the beach and 50, 50% for parking. Again, note the, the fishing and the surfing, Gromon Island Park notes on the right side that were kind of lower numbers. But again, that's why we thought it was important to do an onsite visit for community engagement and input. So what the main draw or attraction that people wanted to see through the survey? Green or open space, increased restrooms, playgrounds, and shade structures. What was the main thing that people did not want to see at Rudy Loop for redevelopment? Over 83% responded they didn't want to see another hotel or resort. 59% did not want to see any additional residential and 40% with a parking garage. What people felt they needed down at the resort area? This was generalized for the resort area as a whole, not specifically to Rudy Loop, but just as a whole. 72% felt that they wanted to see more of a pedestrian-friendly environment and 69% for outdoor recreation space. You can kind of see a trend here with the landscape and the park type setting for the responses. So as Nancy mentioned, all four proposals were listed in the survey. They were listed by key elements, not specifically by developers' names. Obviously, the links to those were on the websites, but just to make it fully transparent and there are people were, we were really trying to get input on what people wanted to see and not specifically, you know, who was invested or, or you know, there are other aspects like that. So the first proposal was the, the Bruce Smith Enterprises proposal. 6% voted for this in the survey. These are, these bulleted items are summarized points that we pulled together through the survey. These were actual comments from write-in responses for the survey. But some of the, the key points, these are all positive aspects too that you're going to see here as noted in, in the bullets. People saw the Bruce Smith proposal, good potential to generate more tax revenue, a good return of investment for the city. Some of these people that responded just preferred, you know, potential for mixed use development like they have, like we have at 31st Street. And it offered a more variety of activities for the most amount of people. The next proposal was the Virginia Gentleman Foundation received 25%. Some of the key things that people noted in their responses that they liked about this proposal were the Surf Museum, public accessibility, and the emphasis on environmental conservancy, more, again, more park-like setting. They liked the Jetty Walk that utilized the jetty and incorporated the boardwalk to go back out over top of the jetty and, and expand that. Fishing decks, and this one also showed option, both options showed a parking garage. The third proposal was the, the Gold Key proposal with 4%. People that wrote in noted the preserving the green space for recreation was a high priority. The Surf Hall of Fame Walk that they, they also liked that a lot. We got a lot of write-in responses for the dog park. People wanted to see a dog park down there as well and the splash pads for the kids. With 64% of people for this proposal is proposal four, which was the Virginia Beach Parks and Rec. Obviously, the, the same kind of open space flex and recreational park space that this proposal shows. It's worth noting in some of the other points I'll get to later, but in a lot of the write-in comments noted that this proposal specifically utilizes the same Rudy, the loop configuration for traffic flow. It's different. It doesn't, you know, keep the same alignment, but it does still have the same loop function that's there currently. And people seem to really gravitate towards that. This also has the most amount of, or at least what people perceive, this is their write-in comments. The, the most amount of perceived surface parking and flex parking for event space, kind of like it's utilized now for, you know, something in the water for the, the artists to park down that way. ECSE, some of the bigger events for trucks and tractor trailers and things. And this also utilized the largest skate park that people wrote in about. So moving on to our second, second stage or second phase of this project, we conducted stakeholder interviews. And during, during two days, we were down at the visitor information center. We were available for, participants were able to sign up for Zoom calls or they could come in person and meet with us. But we met with local business owners, local residents, civically representatives, representation from the resort area or Resort Advisory Commission members. There was a lot of overlap there obviously as well. And then various staff from Virginia Beach departments. So again, I'll, I'll brief through these pretty quickly, but some of the similar themes or recurring themes that we had from all the stakeholders at the event. One of the main things that came up time and time again was access to the site. A lot of people thought that it was really important to preserve the access to the site, whether it's for the Second Street access onto the beach. If, if you're aware, the vehicular access right there is the only access onto the beach between there and the pier. So from a safety aspect or from also event loading, we had, we met with representation from the, from the JCs that noted that that's really important to keep that Second Street access in order to get things on and off the beach safely for events and things. And also utilizing the entire space for access as well. I noted earlier about the, the Parks and Rec proposal showing that loop go down. A lot of people, a lot of the stakeholders and the citizens that we met with thought it was really important to be able to keep the access to the full site all the way down to the jetty and be able to get, to get to the amenities and not have to park farther away to have to get to them. Uh, over and over again, with almost every stakeholder that we met with, people felt that the Rudy Loop should be an iconic space. Thought that we needed to make it marketable for the city and a place that's recognizable, whether it's a more of a grand entrance coming from the south or more of a destination for people to come into and visit, whether it's locals or visitors. Take for a second, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with the site, but the views of the space, until we were down there on the site, and this was after we met with the stakeholders, I hadn't really put this into perspective until I was down there. But if you're down on the site, you really have 360-degree views of everything that's down there right now. You could look to the north, you can see down the boardwalk and you can see the hotels in the resort area. You can see the beach, you can see the inlet, you can see the boats coming in. You can see across to the residence across the water, the marina as well. So a lot of people felt that that was really important to be able to keep that unobstructed. And even if the, the, with the parking features and anything else that was utilized to development, they wanted to see that at a smaller scale so that way those views weren't blocked. Open space and green space, obviously you saw in the results of the survey was very important to a lot of the stakeholders. But a lot of them wanted to note that they were programmed and usable spaces. Not just, and just not another park, but something that could be utilized for all the citizens, you know, year-round. Parking, again, surface parking was very important, whether it's for accessibility, being able to get down to the surfing area, to Gromon Island Park, to the jetty to be able to go fishing. They felt like the parking and surface parking was very important. And obviously surfing down at that area is, has a deep-rooted heritage in the area. And a lot of the stakeholders thought that was really important because it is one of the only available areas for surfing south of 42nd Street. Fishing was also noted as being really important by the stakeholders. A lot of people use the fishing, utilize that area for fishing, not just for recreation or sport, but also out of necessity. There's a lot of people down there, we were onsite, fishing that potentially could be feeding their family by doing that. Connections, obviously the improvements underneath the Rudy Inlet Bridge connect the area over to the Shadow Long Community and to the Marina District over that way. A lot of the stakeholders thought that was really important to capitalize on that and improve those connections and preserve them as well. The schooner inn was also noted as a hot topic. Obviously with, there's not any certainty of what's going to happen with that schooner inn or what moves forward, but a lot of the stakeholders thought that if the city had that, they'd be able to utilize that entire site as a whole and not just have to work around it in the future with the development. Some of the concerns that came out of the stakeholders, obviously cost, initial cost upfront, maintenance costs. But some of the good ideas that came out of those too, I thought were possibly utilizing money from the tip fund or creating its type of conservancy to be able to maintain the parks or whatever new features were put down in that area. Parking facility, a lot of the stakeholders noted that there was a need, obviously there's a need for increased parking down there at the area. However, there was a mixed, mixed view on the parking facility versus surface parking. A lot of the people that are down there now, whether it's surfing or fishing, probably couldn't be able to, they couldn't utilize a parking facility for certain things. Couple of the other concerns that the stakeholders had were safety overall. They wanted to make sure that no matter what was put down there, there was increased visibility and increased lighting. And also whatever the was done, especially specifically with the park, they wanted to make sure that the lighting and the safety was taken into consideration. I noted earlier, the traffic was brought up by quite a few of the, the stakeholders. Keeping the original or the continuous loop design, as you're, I'm sure you're aware, we get quite a bit of visitors down there that will literally just go as far as they can go to, to drive, whether they're cruising the strip. I, I did it in high school, so. We get a lot, a lot of people down that way, be able to do that. And so that way you won't have any kind of backup for the traffic, be able to keep that same configuration. And then one of the biggest things that we heard from everybody throughout this whole process was designing for local residents. They wanted to make sure that it was important to design for local residents in mind because they're the ones that are going to be using it year-round. And they felt like the visitors and the tourists would come there no matter what. So one of the questions we asked each and every one of the stakeholders was for precedence. This is obviously one of the newer images that were flown that Nancy and the department flew for the Rudy Loop site. So if you could take for a second and you look at the aerial of the Rudy Loop site, we asked each one of the stakeholders and some of the people that we met with onsite, what were some ideas that they had or places they had been or traveled to that they could think of that not necessarily would be the exact same, but what worked? Or what are some of the things that they liked or certain things that they could thought, that the city could possibly borrow from? Some of those ideas, South Point Park in Miami, as you can see on the left, these are just two different views. You can see the open green space with the same jetty walk configuration going out over the, over the edge. Also, there's a splash pad and some showers and bathrooms facilities on there incorporated. Venice Beach came up time and time again, the skate park design being successful. Minimal, you know, crime or safety issues with that as well, mainly because it's such a forefront in, in front of everybody. Mission Point in San Diego is another good example that got brought up. Moonlight State Beach Park in Insanius, California, La Jolla Cove. Again, you'll see the, you see kind of the same recurring theme of a park type setting. And again, the access I think is, is good and worth noting for almost all of these. Whether it's parks or, you know, like a shade structure or picnic tables or other little aspects like that that are down all the way at the water's edge so people can utilize the space. Coronado, Coronado Beach, Duhany State Beach in California. One of the stakeholders we met with had recently been to Cape Town, South Africa, and I thought this was a really cool, different view of, of, of a, of a use of a site like that. People also noted that they'd like to see, you know, something along the lines of iconic. I remember the, the large swing that was down there forever. I remember that when I was a kid. People noted something like a Ferris wheel or some, this has more of a mixed use feel to it with some little small shops or little restaurants down there at the edge. Couple more, Mullion Park in Chicago, Maggie Daley Park right along the same edge. Central Park in New York came, came up time and again, also just being able to capitalize on such a valuable piece of property by keeping it a park. Obviously, increasing property values around it by leaving it as a park instead of developing it out. Another interesting area is the island at Pigeon Forge. This is also, it's, you know, out remotely in the middle of Tennessee, but it's turned into a mixed use with a waterfront and, and some other amenities for people to enjoy. Ocean City, Maryland, a large parking area, but again noted it's surface parking and being able to be easily accessible for, for beach traffic and a lot of the residents to enjoy. The Jetty Park, there's some good examples of being able to utilize the jetty. It got brought up quite, quite a few times with the stakeholders of how we could utilize that or possibly improve the jetty with funding from state or federal levels. So our last two events that we had, these, the first one was on January 27th. This was, we were onsite at the Second Street entrance at First Street from 6:30 in the morning until around 2 o'clock in the afternoon. We met with about 100 people that were down there that came out throughout the day to meet with us. These are some pictures from there, but a lot of these topics that I touched on earlier were pretty, pretty repetitive. But I'm sure you're aware, the whole Rudy Loop area down there is a strong rooted history. They're very passionate. They have a strong history down there. The, the access was again, the number one thing that was brought up with our engagement in person from the people down there. Utilizing the same loop configuration and being able to extend that parking and keep it surface parking. So that way surfers and everyone can, can enjoy being down there right next to the water. People can come and go quickly, whether they're starting their day or taking their kids down to Gromon Island Park or taking them to the beach, they don't have to park far away to make a trip down there for a whole day trip. They can go down there and start their day and enjoy it. I kind of just touched on that, but parking is another, one of the biggest things. This was, accessibility for parking was very important. We brought up the discussion of the parking garage. Some of the surfers actually, you know, brought down their boards and we had some demonstrations that were down there. But a lot of the people that are down there utilize longboards or stand-up paddleboards that are 10 to 12 feet long, which in all reality makes it really difficult to maneuver in and out of a parking garage if there's one over that way. So they really prefer the surface parking that's there now. Most of them utilize it first thing in the morning and then they go about their day or they go to work. So that was really important for the people that we met with. Restrooms and showers, again, increasing those facilities for people that utilize the space on a daily basis. Surfing, very important down there, obviously that the First Street area, the jetty has a deep-rooted heritage in surfing on the East Coast, if not the world. The East Coast Surfing Championship is the longest consecutive running surf contest in the world. There's also quite a few national-level charities and surf camps that are run right there at the site. So a lot of the concerns from the citizens were if there was more development pushed out that way, it would cramp down the surfing area, obviously for safety reasons or other, you know, development reasons. But that was one of the biggest concerns that they had. A lot of people felt that the area is great the way it is and it shouldn't be changed. The open space and green space was very important. It's the last free open space at the Virginia Beach Oceanfront is what people noted it as. And they, they felt that whether, no matter what you put there, again, the, the tourists are going to come and they're going to enjoy the amenities that the, the locals can use time throughout the whole year. The majority of the people that we met with down there on the site, again, these are more pictures from that morning throughout the day. But they, they really noted that they didn't want to see a whole lot of development. The scale was really important. If there was anything to be put down there, they wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to increase the, the development of the area. Visibility, kind of like I touched, I touched on before, anything that was, any of the, the notes from the proposals that we talked with people about, they wanted to make sure that they were low in scale and height, whether it's for users or spectators for some of the events, that way they could still enjoy the site as well. Now our last event was at 6:30 in the evening at the Kempso Rec Center. So we wanted to make sure that we reached out and had a diverse group of participants that we had, perhaps people that were, you know, living further inland that were visiting the site and not necessarily down there all the time. So again, these are the, the top things that came up, the top topics that came out of those, that meeting. Open space and green space, they wanted to make sure that it was preserved or expanded. They like, a lot of people that we met with, we did a, an exercise where we pinned up all the proposals and we had sticky notes. People could take notes, put, put sticky notes, comments on there, whether they were talking with us or doing it on their own, because a lot of people, you know, sometimes wanted to do things without having a conversation. We let them vote on each one that they wanted to. The results were very similar to the survey results. In fact, I think 85% were for. In fact, I think 85% were for the Parks and Rec proposal, but all the comments and things that we had were around the same results. Parking was another thing. A lot of the people at that way actually felt that a parking garage would be kind of useful, probably because they're traveling further in. That was some of the conversations that we had, and they're going to make a full day trip out of it, which is a little bit different from some of the people that are utilizing the space down there at First Street. Visibility for users and spectators, again, they wanted to see anything that was developed to stay underneath, under two stories so that way visibility in and out of the site, whether it's for safety or whether they're coming and going, coming over the bridge, they could see what was going on, whether there were certain events going on, there's stages, people noted some of the stages in the proposals that would be useful. And traffic, again, I think that this kind of noted people coming down there for traffic and the flow of circulation, utilizing it for a day trip or come in as a visitor. You can see the note, the pictures in the bottom right are some of those examples, some of the sticky notes that we had, some of the people leave. Destination and safety, these are also some of the main topics that came out of the diverse group of people that we had there. We had a wide range of ages that showed up for the Kempsville Rec Center site. But they felt that they wanted, again, the, the term iconic came up again, they wanted to make sure the space was maximized and it was something that was noteworthy for the city and something the city could market and utilize. Accessibility, we had some older folks that came out there. They were wanting to make sure that the, the surface parking was utilized and that they were, kept the accessibility all the way down to the site so they could get to the boardwalk as well and not have to go across traffic, across separate amenities or get to different things by doing that. And limited development again, was a key topic. And that is what I have for you all.
Okay, Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I can tell you, some topics are so important in local government that we bring back old council members to sit in and hear about them once again. Thank you for being here, Mr. Tower. My question is, do any of the plans, did they take into consideration the current Grommet Park that's there? Did any of those plans take into consideration how it lands in with that or was it not included in any of it that you know of?
Some of them did. I think the, the Virginia gentleman's one actually expanded it as well and that was one of the, that was noted as being very positive by some of their responses too.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Rosemary?
This is really, really helpful and it's amazing the diversity of people's comments as well, but a lot of it was the same, but a lot of it was different. But it's clear that 89% of your survey want a park.
Yes, ma'am.
They, they don't want hotel, they don't want apartments. They, pretty telling. I do think that now that we've drummed it down to that, then what's the part to be like? And I don't think it has to be exactly like these proposals of what they have, because now we know what the people want, we can sort of take all of that and formulate something. I, I do think it's interesting that, and I don't think a lot of people realize this though, the plus for the Virginia gentleman is by a separate entity running it, we'll have a better handle on the homeless situation than if we're running it ourselves. And the ability that they have to raise money to help us pay for it, which is two pretty important things. And I don't know that that was told to people when they were just looking. Just something for us to, to keep in mind. I do think we need a parking garage, but it doesn't have to be back, back in the corner where it's away from the view, so to speak. And Michael has talked about an iconic parking garage and I agree with him, which would be really cool to have the top floor where you can have venue, have a venue of weddings and different things, incredible view for people to use. I think the amenities, we need to, I think this gave us a really good idea of what people want and what they don't want. We've got to have a lay down space for something in the water or the different festivals that we have. But I think that this could be a legacy project for this council, something that we can be very, very proud of. It'll, it'll change Virginia Beach forever and it's just a really important thing. So, great job.
Okay, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to thank Nancy Bloom as well as the WPA team for your presentation and also all of the citizens who participated in the public engagement sessions that provided this kind of really illuminating information. A couple of things I just want to share, you know, I don't have a vision for this. I think the citizens brought us a vision for this that we need to be very mindful of and pay attention to. But in the conversations that I just have in the community, when this topic comes up, there's things that people are looking for that I hear and I think that came through. They're looking for locals to have access to this space. It's one of the few points of entry for Virginia Beach residents and locals at the resort and they want to see it maintained as a welcoming place for visitors as well, but as their kind of point of entry. And I think that's how a lot of people see it. Because otherwise, locals go to the North End, Sand Bridge, Crowton, I don't want to give away all the secrets, but you know, the local spaces, the, some of the bay beaches. But this is the local space at the resort for lots of people. So I think that's really important. The other thing that I think didn't really translate, for whatever reason, in the survey information or the feedback information is about parking. So a lot, so I saw like parking garage was like the third thing, a third or fourth thing they didn't want to see there. But I think if you ask locals if we should have more parking at the resort, they'll tell you yes. So, almost everyone. So, and then that goes back to that point of entry. So I think whether, whether it's envisioned as part of this loop or part, you know, as all the contiguous parcels, I think there's room there for a structure and I think it should be an iconic structure. There's one in Florida that I think we should look at and I think we are, we've missed, and I know they're expensive and we need to make sure there's value and all that, but in, in design and in, in the utility of these spaces that could be used for more than one thing, including venue space, event space, it's really some great examples out there of creatively creating spaces for parking and activation. And then finally, so that's just some feedback, but then finally, I want to make sure we can unpack this issue about homelessness and, and people from the public panhandling, all those things on public spaces. I think the vice mayor really pointed that out and we need to make sure we're on the same page about what that means. Maybe not to put you on the spot, Mr. Harmeyer, but maybe Mr. Harmeyer would have, or Mr. Dehany would have some insight here to share, but can you just make sure that the public and the council are all on the same page about what that means so we could build a beautiful space, envision a unbelievable space and then be, I hate to say plagued, but that's, we could be really facing the same type of panhandling issues, homelessness and that we see in other parts of the city and I don't think the public wants to see that there. Can you help us understand what the limitations are and what, what people's constitutional rights are about, about all that?
Councilmember Belushi, that's a lot to unpack. That could probably be-
We have time.
That could probably be a workshop session in and of itself, but generally, if, I think what the vice mayor was possibly alluding to, if it's a publicly accessible park but managed by a private nonprofit like a conservancy, there are probably more tools in the toolkit as it relates to helping compassionately and empathetically those that are suffering from homelessness or panhandling that will be available to the city and, and the different enforcement and outreach agencies that address that issue. If it's a publicly ran park and it's a public right of way and it's, we typically have less tools at our disposal and it's a longer process to assist those who need that assistance. I don't know if Danny, you want to add anything?
Just briefly, public parks and public sideways and public ways tend to have the most protection of First Amendment activity. They're considered traditional public forum. And so any sort of restriction on speech, which would include panhandling, would have to be a time, space or manner type of restriction. I would note that just having a private actor involved does not serve to completely divest that public interest of the project. So it's really a facts and circumstances test. So we'd have to dig into it and how they arrange that structure.
Thank you.
And maybe I can add, you know, to Michael at this point, you know, a couple of years ago, I met with the mayor of Ocean City, Maryland, and you know, they have a problem that you articulated that, you know, that, you know, to deal with and confront. And you know, one of the options, as the vice mayor brought up, is a conservancy, that's how, what they do at Central Park in New York, you know, in terms of what's going on. There are other, other options. But one of the things that especially I liked about the recommendation from the Parks and Rec, if you bring activity there, you know, instead of just a, you know, green space, but make it a destination for people that have people there that are utilizing that property and perhaps the idea of a skateboard park and BMX and, you know, once again, I think one of the things that we could do is that we want to give useful activities for youth to come out and do and help make that and having the activity in there, I think they even mentioned having viewing stands or maybe even a gazebo there with lighted, you know, entertainment. You know, the thing is, we might be able to, you know, incorporate a number of the best aspects of the number of recommendations coming in and, but once again, you know, we're talking about increasing activities even in the city to midnight, you know. And so once again, I think we can get a real win-win out of this. If you think about the activities we have at the sports center, you know, enhanced with the convention center, the vibe district, Atlantic Park, and then have a destination, you know, we can be, get that reputation of being a healthy city if we can put, you know, health related activities on this property. Just a thought. Amelia, and then Worth.
Thank you so much again, and I'm glad that you went all the way in to Kempsville and other areas so that you'll get a feel from the people, not just at the oceanfront. That was good. And mentioning the activities, which you brought up, like Trashmore, where all those activities, you don't see as many homeless people there. So maybe there's a good point on that. And then you had something about mentioning the tip fund. Can you go back, explain how you meant to do that?
I'm not, I'm not fully aware on how that would work as far as maintenance of the park, but that was again, that was some of the things that came out from some of the local business owners, some of the RAC members that we met with, stakeholders, they thought that that could possibly be something that they could utilize, whether it was for the additional or upfront cost for the development or for the maintenance as well. But I'm not really sure how that plays in.
So you haven't even talked with RAC, you're just at least showing us.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we had, we had members that were stakeholders that we met with to get their input. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Nancy, Ms. Bloom, excuse me, and WPA for that presentation. I really think this is an incredible opportunity for the city and this resort to take advantage of what has been called the best piece of property on the East Coast and to turn it into a public park. And I'm surprised it's not, the number's not higher than 89% of those of us who want to see a green space park here. And so I want to also thank my predecessors and also those here at council, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mrs. Henley, Mr. Tower, Mr. Linwood Branch and Mr. John Uren for preserving this opportunity and not putting us in a position where we can't take advantage of this. This is great and I think we should consider the schooner site. I think we should consider a conservancy and money from the tip funds certainly should be potentially a part of this, but this could be an iconic park for our city to take advantage and just don't, let's go forward.
And if I could suggest a member of councils, if you haven't seen it already, Woodstock Park on Providence Road, you know, they built a world-class skateboard and BMX park on top of a retention tank. And I'll tell you what, you see the, you know, the youth that are involved and go use that and it's close to the, the fuels, Rocky, you know, where Reon feels or everything. If we can get that same type of energy and synergy, you know, for activity at the Rudy Loop, you can imagine a, a number of the elderly people that live in that area coming to watch the young skateboarders and, you know, have park benches there and just, you know, create a whole different type of activity. You know, I think this is going to be a win-win for everybody.
You, you are exactly right, Mr. Mayor. And that, that Woodstock Skate Park located in District One, it certainly, it certainly gets a lot of activity. That place is packed and it is a, it is definitely crowded all the time with folks out there using it, located there in District One off Providence Road. So thank you for bringing that up.
I'm not going to find that word District One.
I tell you, Rudy Loop Park is in District Five.
It'll be in District One if somebody else has it in the way. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Nancy and WPA as well. I, I think the results of the survey have kind of told us what we've been hearing to date, that, that we want to preserve this property. The, the word iconic kind of has, has resonated throughout this presentation and recognizing that, that piece of property for the economic development potential that it is, to make a decision to save it is incredibly, just incredibly forward looking and, and puts a community first. And if we are going to forego that economic development opportunity, we'd better make it a really fantastic park. And, and I do agree with Mayor, the Vice Mayor and Councilman Belushi on thinking about parking, but in a creative way. Love thinking about maybe a green, green space on, on the top deck and, and making it, making the whole experience something that celebrates a unique geographic location that it occupies.
Okay, great. Anybody else? All right, Barbara?
Well, I'm just in thinking with what Councilman Remick said about the past councils who've recognized this and in all the time that we were acquiring the property, and that's been a good long time, and I guess really back to the-
Lighthouse.
Lighthouse acquisition after the hurricane destroyed it and so forth, but the councils recognizing over the years that this was a very special property. And I just remember the retreat when we talked about the fact that, you know, we had at that particular time, and I guess this was 10 years or more ago, had acquired quite a bit and, you know, what, what should we or should we start thinking about it? But the, the consensus of the council at that time was this is probably one of the most unique spots on the East Coast and we need to make sure we just wait until we see just exactly the right use for it and, and not be in any hurry with sort of, you know, one of those things, we'll know it when we see it kind of thing. But unfortunately, just a short while after that retreat, we started getting the unsolicited proposals and then it got to be controversial in other ways, but clearly, the intent of the councils in acquiring this was knowing that this was a really unique area in many aspects and, and it just needed to wait until we knew exactly what the, the right use was. And, and I think maybe this extensive public engagement brought that message to us that the public sees this as something extremely special for everybody. And, you know, when we have a spot that's as unique as this is and as beautiful as this is and has the opportunity for so many different uses by, by our people, then, you know, I, I think maybe we've got the answer. It needs to be something that is directed toward our locals as well as our visitors. So I think this was a good exercise, gave us a lot of good information.
And, you know, let me just say, you know, I think it's a compliment to the council that once again, using this as an example of the citizen outreach that we all want to do from now on about bringing the voice of the people to the table and find out and helping us make decisions. And I think they gave us some great data points and suggestions and, you know, pointed us in at least into a direction to we go. And that, you know, but once again, I think, you know, this is a good template for the future for us. Mr. Dehany? Mr. DeHany?
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like council's wrapping up its conversation on this. So just before we wrap it up, I'm trying to get a sense of what is the preferred next steps as it relates to this. In my mind, I'm kind of thinking it's probably something that after the budget, maybe a workshop in the summer or maybe even your, your end of summer going into fall retreat, we sit down and we have a conversation about this, about kind of honing in on what your direction would be on this. And also to have a discussion on what this possibly would cost and then how it would fit in from an affordability standpoint.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I'll tell you, you know, I think if we wait till the end of summer, get through the budget so we have a, you know, hand and then, you know, actually, we can either have, what's your choice? We could have a dedicated workshop session on this. You know, perhaps, yeah, let's get past the budget cycle. Okay? And that way we'll have a handle. But if the other, if you can get some, you know, if legal can get us some, you know, you know, clear definitions about what, what we can do in terms of perhaps the conservancy model and everything and get those ducks lined up prior to.
Got it.
All righty. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, what's next on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time Kathy Warren will come and give council an update on the residential permit parking program and also a request from one or, one or more of your civic leagues as it relates to an extension and enhancement of the program.
Okay, welcome.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. As the manager stated, I'm here today to provide some information on our residential permit parking program. We have three different areas down at the oceanfront and wanted to run you through those three, give you a little bit of history, and then talk about requests that are currently in front of you today. So again, to touch on the history of the RPP program, this original program was established by city code in section 21350, began in 1992 to alleviate resort traffic and noise in adjacent neighborhoods. Permits are required to park from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM daily. Residents are allowed four residential permits, two annual guest permits, and 10 three-day temporary permits per week. Resident and guest permits are $5 each and temporary permits are free. Applicants are required to present vehicle registration and driver's license per city code to be eligible to receive a permit in this program. So here we're showing you the three different RPP program areas. The first is the Resort RPP. This was established in 1992. That's in the green box. That's not the exact boundaries, but it reasonably shows you the area of the RPP. The Cavalier Shores East is the yellow star up to the north. That was established in 2018. And then Cavalier Shores West, that's a four-hour restricted parking program. That too was established in 2018, and that's where the red star is. So we did want to, to make a point to tell you that the Resort Area Mobility Plan that we just went through for two years of planning and adoption by city council, it does call out that the RPP hours in eligible streets should be reevaluated based on current conditions and anticipated development. Although the steering committee did not take this into account as far as establishing what those times should be, we did want to point out that it was called out as part of the ramp plan. So the first is the Resort RPP. These are the boundaries of the resort. It's from 29th Street down to Winston-Salem and then west of Pacific. Goes back to Parks Avenue. Currently, the Resort Beach Civic League is requesting, and again, this was in 2021, they started having a conversation about the fact that the, the start time was eight o'clock for their RPP program, and they wanted to request that it rolls back to 6:00 PM instead of the current 8:00 PM timeframe. This request focused on parking availability in the neighborhoods, and they were concerned that the entertainment venue with Atlantic Park and the rest of the development there, when that becomes fully operational, it'll become a little bit more difficult to find parking spaces when they come home from work. So they're requesting to roll back the time from 8:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Cavalier Shores West, this is the four-hour restricted parking area. Again, this started as a pilot program back in 2018. The yellow shaded areas here do represent properties that have off-street parking on-site. We just wanted to point this out because this question is asked every time that we present the Cavalier Shores West and East parking programs. So this program, again, is authorized under city code section 21381. Currently, there are 155 on-street parking spaces in this area. It began as a pilot program in 2018, and it's limited to the west side of the historic Cavalier Shores neighborhood. That's west of Atlantic Avenue, 43rd, 44th, and 45th Streets. This was in response to Cavalier Resort construction workers saturating this area and taking up all of the on-street parking spaces in the neighborhood on a daily basis. The time is now restricted to four hours per day in that zone for any visitor that doesn't have a permit from someone that they're visiting in Cavalier Shores. It did start as three hours, and then last year we modified it to a four-hour timeframe. This does, this is set to expire on April 5th of 2023, so next week. These are the initial statistics that we pulled in a study that was conducted September of 2017. We just wanted to show you these numbers that the, the on-street parking, the averages here are about 60% occupied back in September of 2017. We then, over the last month, and granted, we did, we did want to make the point that we know that this is not the peak season, but we did collect data over the last month. And you can see where the average of occupancy on these streets is anywhere between 23% and 35% occupied. We broke it down even further, and these charts just show you on 43rd, 44th, and 45th Street, the difference between residential parkers, which are in blue, and then orange are visitors. We're able to do this through license plate reader technology. Anyone in Cavalier Shores that is registered in the program, they register their license plate. Our management company can go through, read their license plates, and then tell you if this person is a resident, if this vehicle's a residential or a visitor. So you can see a lot more residential parkers than visitors. These are just pictures taken, these, they took them throughout the month timeframe, but these pictures in particular were taken on Wednesday, March 8th at 5:00 PM. You'll see there is capacity on the streets. This was typically what we found throughout the last month. But again, we do realize this is not peak season and there is a four-hour parking program in place. So currently Cavalier Shores West Civic League is requesting to continue this four-hour restricted parking program along 43rd, 44th, and 45th Streets, citing their proximity to the Cavalier Resort and employees from that resort parking in the neighborhood. Onto Cavalier Shores East, this is directly across Atlantic Avenue, same streets, 43rd, 44th, 45th. But they are currently in the RPP program, which begins at 8:00 PM each night and ends at 6:00 AM in the morning. They entered into that program administratively in 2018. Same statistics here, same requirements, four residential parking permits, two guest permits, and 10 temporary permits per week. At $5 apiece, temporary permits are free, and they have 46 on-street spaces. Again, this is just showing you the boundaries of the Cavalier Shores East RPP and the yellow shows those properties that do have at least one parking pad on-site. And then again, back in September 2017, we collected data just to show what occupancy looked like with on-street parkers. At 4:00 PM on, in September, we showed an average of 70% occupied, which was pretty high. And then by 8:00 PM, down to 41%. We took some pictures over that last month timeframe, too. These are the pictures we chose just to show. Again, we saw this throughout the month, and this was on Tuesday, March 14th at 4:30 PM. And so Cavalier Shores East Civic League, they are requesting to remain in the RPP, but they would like to roll back the start time of their program from 8:00 PM to 3:00 PM. They are citing the fact that narrow roads limit emergency vehicle access, proximity to the Cavalier Hotels employee parking, and then their proximity to the beach for those looking to go, looking to go to the beach and utilize the public parking. So for your consideration and discussion today, we just wanted to bring these requests to you. Again, briefly, the Resort Area RPP is asking to go from 8:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Cavalier Shores West is looking to maintain their four-hour parking district. And Cavalier Shores East is looking to roll the start time from 8:00 PM back to 3:00 PM. And with that, I'll take questions.
Okay, Rosemary?
Is this coming with any staff recommendations?
At this time, it is not. We just wanted to present the data and see what city council, which direction you wanted us to go.
Well, I definitely think on the RPP, moving it from eight to six is very reasonable. I mean, I can visual, visualize people coming home from work and trying to find a spot to go in and have dinner with their families. So I definitely support that. And, and the others, you know, we need to hear more from the public and that consideration. But I think definitely moving from eight to six, we really should do that.
Barbara and then Worth.
Well, I think, again, this is another thing that's got a long history. I'm just trying to remember everything. It's a little confusing because we've got the different neighborhoods. It looks to me like we probably need to come up with what is the right thing that all of them can have the same program for. But I know that RAC has historically been a participant in the discussion. And I guess the reason that, that it was extended to the north with the Cavalier was because of the construction, and that's over now. I know that they have other employees, but the construction part was what precipitated it. But I, I think we do need to hear from RAC. But a lot of it had to do with, you know, whether the, the public was having the reasonable access to the, the beach area. We certainly found out with the Rudy that the public wants to be able to use the beach as well. So I do think we need to have more input from the various stakeholder groups because I'm, I'm just mixing them up now that we've got three different, and they all seem to have different requirements or regulations. I, I do think we ought to try to get to one thing for all of them if we're going to continue them.
Hey, Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Warren, for, and Mr. Freeze for your participation in this study for it. Welcome, Rock, again, colleagues to District Six. And I would like to describe this as a good problem to have, and that is everyone must have been at a resort. So looking at it, not through rose-colored glasses per se, but a lot of different stakeholders, yes, I agree. And I do support each one of the civic leagues that's asking for this request. Each one does have specific different dynamics for parking. And absolutely, the, the public should have the right to, to park as well on our public streets. But we've got a lot of success at the resort, and we have a lot of folks that want to be there. So I would, I'd like to hear your input because it's a body of 11, not one. But I do support each of the three civic leagues and their requests. And I, I agree with Vice Mayor that moving it from eight o'clock to six o'clock, I have to believe is certainly very fair.
But the other thing is, doesn't one of the, wasn't there a sunset of next week on some of this?
Yes. Yes, sir, on Cavalier Shores West, the four-hour parking district.
So that might take some immediate response. You know, Chris?
I had an opportunity to sit with some of the stakeholders. And although construction has come to an end, you have three, really two large hotels, Cavalier and Marriott, and then now the MC Suites. And from time to time, you know, I've continued to hear there's an employee parking. There's an issue with employees finding parking. There are no garages within, at close proximity. So, you know, we have to look out for the residents. And then we also have staff that have to find somewhere to park, and then we have the public. So I would be open to, especially looking at these numbers. Can you go back to the 2017 thing? Have we, so have we done any, you were just there.
Do you, I was at East. Do you want the West?
West.
There you go.
So have we done any analysis recently, like last summer?
So we have not. What we've done is we have just taken, over the last month, we wanted to see what capacity looked like. We did not do data collection, although Rob Freeze is our parking manager. Can we pull information from license plate reader?
If we still have the data.
For last summer? We can, we can pull that data for you.
I'd like to see kind of at the peak versus March. Not as many tourists and people trying to get to the oceanfront to enjoy a nice breeze. But I think we do have to do something in the short term to hopefully alleviate some of the pressure.
Great. Michael?
On the subject of the sunset expiring next week, I just wanted to just share my thoughts on, on this, having a number of people I know who live in that neighborhood who have shared with me about some of the challenges that their families have had with parking. And I think it's, and I also think it's incredibly important, as Councilmember Remick stated, to preserve public access for parking on public streets. And at the same time, I have to say that in the time that I've been here, and, and we did extend this once, if you recall, I haven't heard from anyone in the public who has expressed concern about access to this. In other words, no citizens have complained that their access was limited or that four hours wasn't enough. So because of that, you know, for whatever it's worth, I'll just say I'm comfortable with, whether it's a, a longer-term extension, maybe for me, a little bit more preferable than in perpetuity so that we preserve the flexibility. But I don't want to split hairs there. Just understanding what I've heard from citizens who live there and not hearing from public about inconveniences around parking, I think we need to do something before next week or expires.
Yeah. Yeah, Josh?
I think Councilmember Berluci summed it up really nicely in, in terms of, in terms of doing something for the, what, what is urgently before us right now. And I, and I don't think we should hesitate to consider each one of these separately and apart from one another because, I mean, everybody, everybody here has, I'm sure, been to the Bayfront area, in particular, some of the Chicks Beach Ocean Park and Bay Lake Pines all have different kind of facts and circumstances on the ground that, that those all, those all are different in a lot of ways, and so are these. So I, I, I would, I would support an extension of the four-hour limitation. And then let's deal with the other ones. And I'm also comfortable with what the, what the Resort RPP is, is requesting as well.
Could I suggest, you know, at this point, and I know we always like a considerable more input on this, but I think we have a sense of immediacy here. And, you know, the fact that, you know, some of the parking adjacent to the, you know, the Cavalier, it's a very unique neighborhood in terms of lack of parking that a lot of other cities have. Could I recommend that we at least have ordinance of next, voting next week, that we extend this?
And I think, Michael, if we just do it for a year, you know, to once again.
What, a good five?
Pardon?
Five years.
Because I'm thinking of Sandbridge, and, you know, I get an awful lot of it, public parking in the neighborhoods, too. So if we're going to come up with restricting parking in neighborhoods, we better look at all of them. I don't think this is something we can just pick out a couple of neighborhoods that we're going to do this for. I really think, especially if we're going to make it on a permanent aspect. And I, I do think we need to hear from RAC.
Okay, yes. Okay, Michael and then Amelia.
I think we did hear from RAC. We have a letter from them. But the reason I said five was that was based on a conversation that I had previously. I don't, I don't want to call anyone out on that with Mr. Taylor about that. And, and we, we were just, we were just exploring ideas. So I, I So I, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, I don't want to take singular credit for it. But we've already, this is not a new issue, so that's why I say five. We've, I think we extended it for a year previously, so this is not new. And instead of moving forward in perpetuity, maybe as a compromise position, we look at five, and we can move forward from there.
Patrick?
Just additional context and information. In the memo, we articulated and we provided some background information. This is, this will be the fifth time, so it'll be about five years since council has extended this and had these, the current situation in place. So this is the fifth time council's extended it.
Okay. Amelia?
Well, I'm looking at right now, which Michael said, if it's not broken, fix it. And I'm comfortable with what we have for those four hours daily, and also the rolling back to six. Since the first one, that one is April 5th, we definitely need to address that, you know, right away. That far, but I have heard from residents on that area.
Okay, Rosemary?
So if we put it on the agenda, we're going to be hearing from the public then. Because we really, other than, and I'm going to refer to Cavalier Shores, I'm hearing the people of Cavalier Shores, we really haven't heard from the people in the North End. And a lot of the people in the North End may have a different perspective than what we're, we've heard so far. But they'll have an opportunity to come out. If it's on the agenda, we can hear from them, and then we can go from there. But I just wanted you to be aware that there's, there's more to hear. You haven't heard from everybody yet. You know, right, Barbara?
Right. There's a lot out there.
There's a lot, there's a lot out there. So you might want to be careful about what you say you support now or not until you've least heard from the public.
Okay. Well, at least at this point, would anybody object to us putting it on the agenda for this coming Tuesday, and then we roll back to 6 o'clock? Okay?
Just for clarification, Mayor, for how many, for how long of an extension?
Well, we can, we can, if anybody objected to putting it down for five years, and then we can talk about it at the time of the vote.
I think we better hear from the public. Let's just have a question of whether or not we want to consider an extension period, and then, then we can determine that from here in the public.
But, but Mayor, we need to have, you mean on the dais? Because we need to have an ordinance.
Yeah, we have, we have to put a time in on the ordinance. But Patrick?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think there's some clarification that needs to be made. Looks like it may have been in place for three years, not necessarily five from the code. Our, our information says 2018, but it looks like the code's saying 2019, so probably about three or four years. It expires on the 5th?
Yeah, next, next Tuesday.
If council doesn't vote or take action to extend it, then it goes away.
Okay. Would a three-year be a compromise?
You can still bring it back.
Yeah.
You could go with a three-year or five-year, with an option to terminate after three years.
Yeah. Okay, Chris?
I think the reason.
Okay, okay. Could we put it down for three, and then after we hear from the public, we can, you know, adjust accordingly?
So what's the feeling of this body about Cavalier Shores East, which is close to the oceanfront, which wants it?
Which is in the RPP now, that we're going to agree to move it back to 6 o'clock, it sounds like they would like it at 3 o'clock.
We need to have the RPP program on the agenda for public discussion, because I know some of them have been pretty hot and heavy in the past from all the sections that are involved. And I, I think we need to hear from the public. I don't, I'm not in any position right now to say what I will support or what I want, because I think there's a lot to be heard.
Yeah, and I agree, Barbara, but, you know, the thing is, you know, the sunset's on Tuesday.
I know.
So at least let's get it on the agenda of the public.
Cavalier East doesn't sunset.
No, that doesn't sunset.
Just Cavalier West.
Yeah, why don't we just deal with Cavalier West for now?
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Let's do that one first.
All right.
But also, pardon me, Mayor, if it's okay with you and Mr. Remick, I think at the same time, I completely agree with that, because it doesn't have a sunset. But I also think we need to move forward with this expeditiously, because it sounds like we're hearing from the neighborhoods that there's serious concerns that they have, and they want to see us resolve them. So I, I just want to make sure we get this teed up, that we're doing, we're hearing from the public, we're doing the works out, doing it in a timely fashion.
You got it. Rosemary?
I have a question. So if we change the RPP from 8 to 6, is that a blanket or is it just for the resort?
So it's blanket.
So we could do the blanket next week, and then we could decide later about Cavalier East. Is that okay?
Is that okay for now? Yeah, because once again, we have a sense of immediacy with this. Okay, is that the, is that good direction? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Mr. DeHany.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, our public works director is going to give you a quick tee off of this presentation. But basically, it's, it's a request to get council to consider electric, electric vehicle charging plan. Yeah?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I have some great news for you. Despite the fact that my name is on the agenda for three items today, I'm not presenting a single one. I'm actually here just to kick them off. Our first, our first item today was, is brought to you by the Department of Public Works. You know, the President came out with a very bold statement about wanting to engage in electrified, in electrified vehicles and to work on the reduction or elimination of fossil fuels for our, for most of our vehicles. On the, on the tail heels of that, some very ambitious legislation came out about funding how we, how we want to fund electric vehicle charging. It's all very controversial. There's a whole lot at play and a whole lot going on. But there's some things that, that really can't be ignored, and that is that we have citizens in the city of Virginia Beach who have electric vehicles, and that number is continuing to grow. We have visitors to our city that are coming here with electric vehicles, and that number continues to grow. With that in mind, the Department of Public Works reached out to a consultant at the CADMS. And today, I'm very pleased to have Rex Hazelton, the Senior Associate with CADMS, here today to talk to you about the findings that we have found or that they have found after engaging with the public and doing a fair bit of research on our city. Rex?
Welcome.
Thank you all very much. My name is Rex Hazelton. Thank you for the introduction, LJ. I'm a Senior Associate with the CADMS Group, and we've been working with LJ, Lori, and other members of departments across Virginia Beach over the last several months on an electric vehicle community charging infrastructure plan, which I will be providing you with an update about. I'll wait one moment.
The wonders of technology.
Originally from Northern Virginia. I live in Washington, DC right now. Yeah.
How's Bay Lake Beach?
Oh, it's great. Yeah. I drove down last night in the new Mustang Mach-E, so electric vehicle. I rented one, sent on down here. It's great.
Do they have Ford charging anywhere?
Ford?
Do they charge for that anywhere?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So Ford has a partnership with Electrify America, which is one of the largest charging providers. They're partnered with Walmart, and they're actually arguably the largest fast charging.
Okay. We're about ready to go?
Tell you all about it.
Okay, folks, let's reconvene.
Hi. Again, my name's Rex Hazelton. I'm with the CADMS Group, based in Washington, DC. Been working with LJ, Lori, and other members of Virginia Beach municipal staff on an electric vehicle community charging plan over the last couple of months. Just to give you some context about what we're talking about today, wanted to give you an introduction to what motivated the development of the plan and study that we've been working on, talk to you a little bit about what that process looked like, and then walk you through a little bit of scenario analysis and modeling we did in terms of what some of the electric vehicle and charging infrastructure rollout might look like in Virginia Beach over the coming, coming years. And then talk about some of the recommendations that we came up with in the plan that was recently submitted as a draft. Just a quick introduction to CADMS. We're a consulting firm, strategic and technical consulting. We specialize, I'm in the Sustainable Transportation Group, but we work across a bunch, several different sectors, including transportation, electrification in general, resiliency efforts, climate and climate change mitigation, adaptation planning. And we also do a fair amount of work in the autonomous vehicle and fleet electrification spaces, as well as maritime and aviation. So to introduce you a little bit to the plan that we developed, what the motivation for development of this plan was, first and foremost, as LJ mentioned, there is an unprecedented amount of federal funding that has become available over the next five years. And want to take a look at Virginia Beach to understand how they can, you all can best position yourselves to be able to leverage that funding, put some of that forethought into what the rollout of electric vehicle charging infrastructure might look like, and be able to establish partnerships that would facilitate that, that financing. There's also been legislation at the state level, Clean Cars Virginia, which sets Virginia to have 100% of new light-duty vehicle, passenger vehicle sales by 2035. So we're going to be seeing a lot of electric vehicles coming in Virginia over the coming years. Also looking at workforce development, job creation, and enhancing tourism flows. Because as, as more electric vehicles are coming online, you're going to be seeing more and more tourists who are going to need to be able to charge. And then lastly, looking at resiliency and emergency planning. Because when there's a lot of people who need to be charging their vehicles all at once, if there's an evacuation, there needs to be some strategic planning involved there to make sure that that goes smoothly. A quick intro to just a couple of the major funding programs. There's the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program, which is a $5 billion program that money's flowing to state DOTs to build out a national charging network. Partnering to that is a community charging discretionary grant program, which is $2.5 billion, which Virginia Beach directly will be eligible to apply for. And that's one of the main motivations for this, for this program. Those grants can range from $500,000 to $15 million. I mean, it's a computed, competitive grant program. There's a few other multi-billion dollar programs that are related to EV charging infrastructure and resiliency planning. And within our plan, we have a fair amount of review of these programs and some positioning that Virginia Beach can do to facilitate application. There's also federal tax incentives, which you're probably aware of, for allegedly vehicles for individual consumers, which is $7,500. There's also tax incentives for installation at chargers for residential installations of $1,000 per charger. But also recent changes that will affect specifically the municipal fleet, the commercial electric vehicle tax credit, which is available to tax-exempt entities. So this will be the first time that actually the municipal government will be able to receive a direct payment from the federal government for procurement of electric vehicles for placement of the vehicle fleet. As I mentioned, Clean Cars Virginia, so this is the annual increase that's going to be expected starting in 2026. So looking at today, where we have, you know, less than 10% of new vehicles that are being sold that are electric vehicles in Virginia by 2035, that's getting to be 100, and it's increasing about 6% to 8% per year, year over year, for the future. And that'll be looking at something around, you know, 40% or 50% of vehicle resident, sorry, 50% of passenger vehicles in Virginia Beach being electrified on the roads today or on 2035. Talking a little bit about what our process was, we first established, and looked at what the lay of the land was in Virginia Beach, what the existing legislation is, what the existing EV ownership structure is, and then took all the data that we were able to be provided by the various departments that we worked with, who've been extremely helpful for us over the last several months, and looking at what we think the deployment scenarios are going to look like in terms of electric vehicles over the coming decade. Then doing projections of what the number of chargers that would be needed citywide to support that level of electrification. Then after we've done that, we are looking at what are some of the changes that the city could make in terms of permitting or new ordinance that would enable residents and businesses to deploy electric vehicle charging more efficiently. Lastly, we undertook a fairly extensive stakeholder engagement process that included a survey that we distributed, which we had over 1,300 responses to that. And meeting with, we had over 20 different meetings across different departments to talk about what we are doing with this plan, get input from each of the departments about, whether that's data collection or information about their specific fleet inventory and any desire they have to electrify their vehicles, and strategic planning around what areas of the city or what areas, what communities might be most interested in electrifying in the coming years. As I mentioned, the public survey was open for a month. We had over 1,300 responses, which is quite astounding. It was distributed online via social media and also in person at the auto show. And it was offered in 10 different languages, which helped facilitate that level of response. So now I'll shift a little bit into the more analytical part of our plan development and give you a sense of kind of what the electric vehicle market in the United States today, and then how that translates to Virginia Beach. So today, there's about 110 different EV models that are available nationally on market, and a little over 3 million total vehicles deployed in the United States. Just looking at light-duty vehicles, so cars, trucks, not looking at freight or other applications like that. But by 2030, it's projected that it's going to be over 26 million electric vehicles are going to be national, deployed nationally, which is a significant ramp up, as you, as you can see. All of the major OEMs in the United States have made significant commitments to electric vehicles. Ford and GM have both announced that they'll be investing over $25 billion in this and will be electric, electrifying their entire fleet by 2035. There will be hundreds and hundreds of new models coming out available over the next couple of years. And by 2030, we're looking nationally that about 50% of all vehicles, one of every two vehicles is expected to be an electric vehicle by 2030. In terms of the cost price point for electric vehicles, by 2025, it's expected that across light-duty fleet, electric vehicles and internal combustion engine vehicles will be about equal in price, not accounting for the, the existing tax credit. Then also to note that the range of EVs is increasing significantly year over year today. Right now, an EV average range is about 275 miles per charge. That is, will exceed over 300 in the coming years. But to note that the average distance that a person travels to Virginia Beach, the tourist, is about 220 miles, which means that you have a lot of people who are going to be driving here in an electric vehicle and are going to need to be charging their vehicle when they arrive. How people are going to be charging, the vast majority of electric vehicle charging takes place at home. Today, about 80% is just a residential in your driveway, in your, in your garage. But as more vehicles are being deployed, you're going to be seeing a higher prevalence of public charging and reliance on public charging, whether that is at retail locations or in apartment complexes. But people specifically, those without a driveway, who might live in an apartment or condominium or a townhome, they will be more reliant on that public charging. Then you'll also be looking at DC fast charging, which those are, if you think of like a gas station, that's an electric vehicle charging. station, that's an electric vehicle charging station that you can fill up your car in about 15 minutes. And those are really strategically going to be placed for intercity interstate travel. So the current EV market in Virginia Beach, there's about 2,300 EVs registered across the city. In this center map, you can see that's the distribution of EVs across the city. And that final map on the far side is the distribution of existing electric vehicle charging stations in, in Virginia Beach. And they're concentrated along 264 and in the oceanfront area, which is what you'd, what is to be expected. But as you can see, outside of those two areas and a little bit in the north part of the city, there really is not much electric vehicle charging to date. It's about 120 Level 2 chargers, which are your typical, it's a medium level charging, fill up a car in about eight hours. And the red dots are the fast chargers, which again, those are about 15 minutes. But while there are about 140 total plugs, so the actual charging plugs, not stations, only about half of those, which are labeled as public, which just means anything that's publicly accessible, are actually fully publicly accessible. So if they exist at a car dealership, or if they're at a place of business that's restricted, only about 50% of those chargers are currently available to all residents in Virginia Beach. Looking down the line in what we expect the deployment to be in Virginia, Virginia wide and Virginia Beach, by 2035, that the number of electric vehicles in Virginia Beach is expected to increase from 2,300 today to over 116,000. So it's a very significant ramp up, particularly when you're getting to 2035 and every single vehicle, assuming that all policies currently are maintained. Every vehicle's going to be an electric vehicle, and that's a lot of charging that's going to be necessary to be deployed across the city. So on that, so we're looking that by 2035, the number of public charging stations that are going to be necessary is over 7,000, up from that 140 or so today. That's distributed between DC fast charging stations, the fast gas station style chargers, Level 2 public, whether that is at, you know, grocery stores, movie theaters, libraries, things of that nature, or workplaces. So a fair number of businesses in Virginia Beach would be expected, or will be expected to be installing these chargers to serve both their customers, but also their employees to be able to charge their vehicles while they're at work. We also looked at specific tourist flows in Virginia Beach, and we'll be looking at about an additional 150 chargers on top of that, that would be in focused areas such as the oceanfront area and Sand Bridge and other tourist destinations to serve specific the tourist populations. So the 7,000 figure is really looking at the residential population of Virginia Beach So after we looked at what are the projections of the number of EVs that are going to be coming to Virginia Beach potentially, we looked at a number of different factors and conducted a spatial analysis to try to understand where, what areas of Virginia Beach could electric vehicle charging be deployed most effectively. We looked at several factors that are highlighted on the screen, in addition to some, some others, but what we were really looking at are commuter time, average hustled income, existing charger access, the dense, the number of long dwell time locations, so that's where someone would be shopping and parking their car for, you know, an hour and a half, maybe up to three hours. The number of renters within a specific community, as renters are not as likely to have a garage or a driveway, so they can't charge at home. So they'll need greater access to public charging, which is what we're really talking about here. And then also the number of multi-unit dwellings, because again, the higher density population without the access to residential home charging will be more reliant on those public charging access points. What we have as a representation here is the prioritization of Level 2 charging across the city. And then the red dots are priority municipal sites that were identified. So the individual, the, these, the color coding, the darker the color, the higher priority that, that area is. And this is broken out by census block group, and then the black lines are subdividing each of the different voting districts in Virginia Beach. So we worked with city staff in conjunction with the scoring methodology that we developed that's provided in the plan, to come up with a series of priority locations where charging could be deployed in Virginia Beach on municipal properties. And so what is highlighted on the screen here, we provided a list of about 60 priority properties out of the several hundred that were reviewed, that fall within some of those regions, that would best serve the public and members of the community and tourists for prioritization of charging in the coming years. And when I, on the previous slide, looking at the number of renters, multi-unit dwellings, average hold, hold income, part of what we're trying to do with this analysis is look at positioning Virginia Beach to access federal funding and also be able to ensure equitable access for chargers to all populations in Virginia Beach. So looking geographic distribution, but making sure that we are identifying and providing charging for disadvantaged communities, loaded moderate income populations across Virginia Beach. And so those, those sites that have been highlighted in, I guess it looks like purple in this slide, are located within those communities that have been identified by federal agencies as, as priority communities. To talk briefly about why charging might make sense in Virginia Beach on municipal properties, first, is that it's a potential source of revenue for the city. If you are working with a charging provider, who they can provide the charging infrastructure and provide all the, all the equipment and maintenance of that charging infrastructure, and then we can, the city can participate in a revenue sharing program, where the city would actually be recouping some of that sales revenue. Access to federal sources of funding, as I've mentioned, that's a major part of this. The federal government is specifically looking at funding those projects in municipal locations that only the city would be able to access. Feeling, addressing equity and environmental justice priorities in the city. You want to make sure that there is a geographic distribution of these chargers. And as you saw in the previous map, where charging is really concentrated along I-264 and in the oceanfront area, the intervention by the municipal government to prioritize some of more rural locations or some of the other areas within Virginia Beach can help ensure that everybody in Virginia Beach has access to these chargers. That again, as tourist populations are electrifying in greater numbers in the coming years, making sure that they have adequate charging infrastructure in those locations in the near term, because it'll take some time for the charging infrastructure to catch up with the level of electric vehicles that are being deployed. And lastly, looking at operational efficiencies between electrification of the municipal fleet that might be taking place in the coming years, and citing public charging in conjunction with charging that might be able to serve the municipal fleet as well. Just a quick, looking at what are we talking about? We're talking about charging infrastructure, really talking about from the meter to the actual charger. That is what, what we're talking about here, not the actual charging of the vehicle, and nothing that would be owned by Dominion, anything on the distribution side. So talking about what are the types of ownership models that would be available to the city? In some cases, some cities have elected to actually buy, own, and operate charging stations. That has a high amount of risk to the city, and also has a very capital intensive options. Typically, municipalities would opt to partner with a third party, with an EVSP, an electric vehicle service provider, who would come in, partner with the city, construct, own, and operate those charging stations on behalf of the city. There's also a partnership approach where the city could just provide the, a lease for the, for the property, and that service provider could come and operate the charging station, but the city could actually maintain, maintain ownership of that equipment. There's also subscription based models, where you could have an ongoing monthly payment to an EVSP, and then they provide a turnkey solution. So there's a few different operational structures that the city could enter into or to pursue that avenue. But the lowest risk and the lowest capital intensive, upfront capital intensive operation would be a fully third party owned and operated partnership approach. So in our plan, after, what we were trying to assess is what are things that the city could do to best position itself and improve efficiencies as electric vehicles are rolled out in the coming years? And really what we're talking about is the city's role as a facilitator, facilitator. It's not leading the charge to a vehicle electrification necessarily. It is ensuring that residents and visitors both have access to charging, but also aren't prevented from installing charging, so that they can charge the vehicles in a efficient and effective manner. So we broke down six specific goals that the city, we developed with the city around make, to orient the city. This is ensuring that charging is easy and convenient, and catalyze public engagement around charging, establishing EV municipal programs within the government, enhancing charger access specifically at municipal sites, identifying sources of funding at the federal and state level that the city can leverage, and then some of the long-term planning opportunities, specifically as technology develops in the coming years. I wanted to walk through a couple of the high level recommendations that we made in development of this plan. The, the draft plan that we submitted, there's 70 recommendations, or 34 recommendations with 70 specific actions. So it's fairly granular in its assessment. But again, these are actions that the city could take, not to, they're not recommendations for spending money or investing specifically. It is how the city can best prepare itself and how it can best leverage existing federal and state funding and be able to serve its residents. So an example of this is streamlining the permitting process for residential and commercial charging installations. Right now, if you are a resident in Virginia Beach and you want to install a Level 2 charger at your house, there's no specific guidance on the city website around that. It's somewhat of a confusing process. So we would recommend there being a streamlined permitting process, so that a resident can just go to the city website, get a step-by-step instruction manual of this, these are what is needed, this is what I can provide, and be able to streamline and make that process more efficient and effective. In doing that, it would also allow the city to track the number of electric vehicle chargers that are being installed, both in residential and commercial operations, so be able to benchmark and track how the city is doing in terms of both vehicle electrification, but also supporting, how, supporting its residents and being able to track the number of public charging stations that are available. Also looking to do that in order to reduce the workload for city staff in terms of answering questions, because there's going to be thousands and that, foreseeably thousands and thousands and thousands of these electric vehicle chargers that are going to be installed in residential applications in the coming years, and that involves a lot of questions. So making it very clear and concise how individuals can make that happen will reduce some of the redundant effort at the city level. With parking and signage, right now, there's no criteria around electric vehicle parking spaces or prevention of both a internal combustion gasoline vehicle parking in an EV charging space, but also an owner of an electric vehicle charged, parking at an EV charging space for an exorbitant amount of time, and stopping that charger from being able to be used by other, by other drivers. At the state level, they've implemented codes that prevents both gasoline vehicles and electric vehicles from parking in specific, occupying specific spaces for extended periods of time, and ticketing those, those vehicles. And that code could be adopted in Virginia Beach and enforced in the same manner. Specifically looking at, you know, there, there is a large prevalence of townhouses in Virginia Beach and a number of multi-unit dwellings. Those individuals who don't have access to a driveway or garage still are going to want to charge at home, because that, that is the cheapest way to charge, using, you know, plugging in your car at home is the most, is the easiest and cheapest way to charge a vehicle. And if you don't have a driveway or garage, you might be incentivized to try to run a extension cord from your home directly to your car, and that creates all kinds of safety issues and fire hazards. So establishing some ordinance or protocols regarding curbside charging and some technologies that might be used, or some permitting practices that would stop residents from participating in actions, like it's shown on the slide right here, where someone's just running a power cable out their window straight to the car. And you can, that you, particularly in urban settings, you see that a lot. I live in Washington DC, I see it fair regular, fairly regularly. And in other jurisdictions, they've started to establish protocols for what that should look like. And taking a proactive approach in that can help both facilitate deployment of charging in general, but position the city to try to avoid some of these, some of these problems. As I mentioned, the city's role as a facilitator is really the, the primary, primary role that the city can play, and that's providing resources to its citizens, whether that's information about how to charge their vehicle, or finding a licensed contractor who can install charging at their home for them, or how to take advantage of federal tax incentive programs, and make sure that they are, they are able to facilitate their procurement of vehicles as cheaply as possible. Providing some sort of a resource information hub on the city website can go a long way, just to help residents to try to learn about this new technology and gain some familiarity. They can also be a place to direct residents to permitting and ordinance documents, and those guidance documents that we mentioned before, and looking at installation guides, things like that, that people can use as kind of an electric vehicles 101 place and as a resource hub for them. Another recommendation we made is around tourism. As I mentioned, there are going to be a lot of individuals who are traveling to Virginia Beach who are going to need to charge their vehicle, and they will have some concern about that. You know, I drove, rented electric vehicle down here yesterday, and I stopped in Newport News, that's where I had to do that to get to a DC fast charger. And I had to look that up ahead of time and map my route accordingly. And that's what folks are going to have to be, have to be doing in the coming years. And they're going to plan their travel based around where they can make sure they can charge their vehicle in the very short term. And then as more electric vehicle, or more charging stations are deployed, that'll become less of an issue. But Virginia Beach could position itself and say that we are, you know, you all are an electric vehicle friendly city, have some charging installed at strategic locations, and make that part of a marketing strategy, were you so inclined? That other cities have undertaken such similar efforts, and we have some information in the plan regarding that. Tracking progress against other cities, other areas in Virginia and nationally, to be able to position Virginia Beach as that electric vehicle friendly city is a very effective mechanism. Looking at the number of chargers that are deployed on a year-by-year basis, the number of electric vehicles that have been adopted on a year-by-year basis, and comparing that against other jurisdictions to both track progress internally, but also to show leadership and show how Virginia Beach is advancing in the region is a very effective mechanism for communication. In our plan, we have annual projections of what that charger rollout might look like and electric vehicle rollout might look like. And so that is a potential barometer that could be used for target setting in the coming As I mentioned, a major push for all of this planning is how Virginia Beach can position itself to access federal funding. What are the partnerships that can be established? What are the programs that are available, that are specifically, that are specifically, functionally available both to Virginia Beach, but meet the requirements of Virginia Beach being a coastal community that is very geographically dispersed with of Virginia Beach being a coastal community that is very geographically dispersed with very different, both geographies and socioeconomic criteria associated with it. So looking at a whole suite of the federal opportunities, there's over in the plan, there's about a dozen different programs that could potentially be leveraged directly by the city as an applicant. And then funds that are flowing from federal government to the state level that could then be accessed by the city. There's another half dozen or so programs. And this is all include, you know, all in over the next five years, you're talking about, you know, $100 billion of investment or so that could be of program programmatic investment that might be able to be leveraged. Within the context of all this, it's really important to organize with the utility. They have to be performing the upgrades that are necessary for the distribution system to enable the charging. You can't just go install chargers and have that be it. So early coordination with Dominion, both to understand where the grid is constrained in different areas and where it might take a longer lead time to install charging, but also to establish that coordination so that when you're accessing federal funding, you can, there's more of a unified front of how you're coming coming to address this because you don't want the utility to be surprised by the activities of that Virginia Beach might be providing. And a last example is looking at resiliency strategies. As I mentioned, you know, during evacuations or grid failures, there are specific issues related to electric vehicles. And if everybody in the city tries to charge their vehicle at once, that can cause some problems for the utility or could potentially be causing, you know, long lines at charging stations. So strategically deploying chargers across Virginia Beach, specifically mobile charging applications, which can be deployed geographically anywhere, they can be put in the back of a truck and can travel, but can also operate as a normal charging station and non-emergency periods is a potential application that Virginia Beach could look at. Also looking at energy storage, large battery systems that could be used both to enhance grid resiliency all the time, but specifically during grid failures could be utilized for electric vehicle charging as well. So with that, I hope that gave you a sense of some of the work that we've been doing around this. The plan that we submitted, it's far more granular in its analysis than this and has a lot of detail regarding all the work that we have done and the hard work that all the members of the municipal staff have helped us with over the last last few months.
And then Rocky's going to ask you about charging stations. Some of this. Patrick first.
Mr. Mayor, basically, we brought this to council because having a plan and adopting a plan, and we hope council would consider adopting a plan ideally next week, but it doesn't have to be next week if council wants to defer it and have further conversations on it. But having a plan gives us a leg up in case we want to go for any kind of federal funding. It's not a requirement, but these are one of the things that the entities that fund charging stations, they look to see if we have an adopted plan. But adopting this plan doesn't necessarily say when and where and how it's going to be deployed. That could still be further conversations if council desires that.
Work on them, Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hanson and Katamis. Great presentation, hopefully an opportunity, but I just a couple of questions. You said $100 million and that would that be in Virginia Beach or invest total investment over a certain amount of time?
Oh, the federal funding?
Yeah.
Availability? That is, it's billion and that's the national level of all the programs. They're specific to one of the largest programs, which is the community charging infrastructure community, sorry, electric vehicle charging infrastructure grant program for community charging. That grant program per year grants range from 500, 500,000 to 15 million per award. That's a five, a $2.5 billion program over the next five years. But that is one of several programs that could be available.
Yes, work.
Just two more quick questions.
Sure, go for it.
So any range or idea yet, Mr. Hanson, on what potentially would be our city investment? And then lastly, how much is the private sector in this space doing right now?
So great questions. At this point, we wanted to bring the plan to city council. This is, this is hitting you all very cold. I would imagine most of you had not considered that image of the of the cord across the sidewalk or what this means to have electric vehicles and townhouses. The sheer number of vehicles that we're talking about, I imagine this hit you very cold. And so that was, that was paramount to what we wanted to do was one, engage with a consultant to help us have a good understanding of what to bring to city council, to bring it to city council after we had had engaged the public to a degree. And then to put together this plan that would allow us to go after funding as, as, as council directs us. So I don't, I can't tell you exactly what we're looking at in our first round. We're really trying to figure that out. And I think, you know, we're also kind of hoping that you'll help us to understand if we're on the right track, if this is, if we're going where you, where you really expected us to go. The second part of your question about the private sector, we absolutely believe that the private sector has a role to play. But as, as you can see, from the existing chargers, it's along the 264 corridor at the oceanfront and a little bit at the north end. This reminds me very much of how the internet rolled out. It rolled out very successfully to wealthy communities, not so much for those in the low to moderate income communities. And the reality is, this is, this should be a city citywide strategy. It should not just be limited to those areas where it's economically a really good idea, which is why if you saw on Rex's, on Rex's slide, there was one slide in there that identified municipal locations and some of them were green and those were targeted especially, especially to environmental justice communities. And I think that that's the role that we as the government maybe have the, have the strongest role in. The private sector will definitely have a role to play here. But we, but we still have a number of things to figure out. What's the best model for us? Do we want to go after the federal funding and perhaps purchase some of this and allow a consultant to operate our infrastructure? Do we want to find another? You saw that there were a couple of different models. There's, there's really, we're on the front end of this, but that's, that's the best answer I could give you now. And I'm sorry, it was a little long, long-winded.
Hey, Rocky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
LJ, Rex, thank you for the presentation. My question is centered around, well, we're talking about all of these different charging stations. Is it a one size fits all for charging or does Honda require one plug and another plug? So, so how would that work? Do you have to have many different chargers or is there a universal adapter?
That's a good question. So all vehicles can be charged using the same charger except for Teslas. Tesla has a proprietary network that they are integrating so that other, other brands can utilize those chargers. So historically, it's kind of in two silos, Tesla and then everybody else. But it's the combined charging system CCS charging that is integrated all the different.
So then a follow-up on that is how then do you triage that to know how many different Tesla versus other charging ports do you put in? Because I'm sure that once this grows like it says in this, in this presentation, there's going to be a lot of different markets that cover this. GM and Ford and Chevrolet and everybody else. So how do you triage which ones you put?
Yeah, there's, there are a number of different groups. There's the EVSPs that I mentioned, electric vehicle service providers, over 30 of them operating in the United States right now that have different networks. They always use the same technologies. The charges themselves won't be, they'll be interoperable. And that's part of the federal programmatic, all the funding that's coming out. A requirement of that utilizing that funding is everyone has to be able to use that station in the exact same way everywhere. So the payment system is the same, the way you charge is the same. So that, that is a, that is happening in real time right now. But the question mark of, it's not a question of the type of technology it's going to be used, it's just which vendor is going to be supplying it the same way. You have to figure, figure out what brand of car you want to buy.
Hey, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I was reading the report, I was honestly floored by the statistics. And just five years from 2016 to 2021, we went in Virginia from 3100 battery powered electric vehicles to over 30,000 of them. And that's just in five years. So I, I, I'm very appreciative that, that we're looking into this and taking a forward-looking approach. I've got a couple of questions. How far are we from having 264 designated as an alternative vehicle corridor so we can tap the funds?
So just to contextualize that for everybody, there is a program for the Federal Highway Administration. It's referred to as alternative fuel corridors, and that is a national network of the national highway system. And those designated highways are the highways that are eligible for the NEVI, the $5 billion DC fast charging network funding source that I mentioned. I-264 is not designated as that right now. We had a meeting with VDOT about six weeks ago now to try to open up that door, see after this, this first iteration, the first funding round to get designation of I-264 for next year. There will be a nomination process that will open up in May. And it would be recommending that we directly engage with FHWA and have another follow-up meeting with VDOT because it is the case that Virginia Beach is the largest major city on the East Coast from an alternative fuel corridor. And I-264 has the highest traffic count that isn't an alternative fuel corridor anywhere in the state. It is the idea that you could build a national charging network through the alternative fuel corridor system without including I-264, which doesn't make any sense. So it's, but there'll need to be some additional conversations to make that.
Yeah, as a, as a follow-up, I also read that the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments has available outreach in terms of helping localities like Virginia Beach Plan, help with drafting new ordinances, advocating for state federal funding. I assume we're open to leveraging those resources.
Yeah, and same to be said with Virginia Clean Cities, who was involved with throughout this plan, that they've been very helpful and they have a number of both informational resources, but also federal funding types of resources that can be made available to the city. And if the city were interested in providing that information hub for residents, those types of education outreach materials, they have a great number of those things as well.
Thank you, Amelia.
Yes, I applaud Patrick for bringing this is very timely. Thank you all for the message because like I chaired the Hampton Roads Transit Commission. And as you can see, we're looking at electric buses, electric fleet. We're definitely applying for some of these federal funds. So by being ahead of the game before the other cities all, sorry, other cities, before they all get on board, this is important because the train has left the building is something that we need to do. Thank you for sharing this.
Thank you, Rosemary.
Thank you.
What an amazing report that you shared with us and a lot of hard work has gone into it. And there's really some nightmarish visions, like we just talked about all this on-street parking, how there's people going to charge their cars, you know, when they're sitting in Chatelon or where, you know, the resort and different places. And then you talk about the extension cords going out. It's just kind of crazy. But I applaud you for getting ahead of this and getting this out soon. And I think the sooner we get in to line up for federal dollars, the better because there's going to be a lot of municipalities who are going to go after those federal dollars. So I think as quickly as you can do it, I think it would be a good thing.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I can just say this, you know, I think we got to approach this with a sense of optimism and caution. I think optimism in the fact that we are tourists, that we want people to come here. We cannot put up a barrier to success that, you know, that would be logistically inconvenient to get their vehicles. You know, the, the future is, you know, electric vehicles or perhaps something else down the future. But I think, you know, I think immediate action on us now to come up with a plan. And don't forget, a plan can be a dynamic work that, you know, we just get it started, but then progress as the technology improves and, you know, things of that nature. But I think, you know, once again, I think we have the obligation to proceed immediately. My sense of caution comes that I think, you know, this is my focus group of one, that the 2035 goal is indeed ambitious because of some of what I consider the barriers to success of getting things fully implemented of, you know, a couple of which, you know, a couple of months ago, I went to the Pentagon with the military group and they talked about the potential confrontation that, you know, we're going to have, you know, with Russia, where a lot of the, correct me from what I understand, a lot of the battery. Period comes from. And so, you know, that's a barrier to success there too. But, but once again, it's, the other thing is too, that when we talk about barrier disposal and, but then also the other consideration that is the electric grid going to be able nationally to sustain all this within that period? You know, when you look at, you know, you know, states like California, which currently have grid problems, then, you know, what is going to be the expected amount of people that are going to be able to, you know, effectively have that much, you know, exponential of demand on the power grid? And, and, you know, so once again, I have those, you know, type of concerns about. And the other thing is too, that, you know, with the power grid and the vehicles themselves, I understand, could be subject to cyber attacks, you know, going forward, which can, you know, potentially put us at a national risk. You know, I don't want to be negative, but I think we have to address the barriers to success to the, the effective transition. And the other thing is the, as of right now, you know, the cost of vehicles, you know, I got a hybrid and I had to pay $5,000 more. But from what I understand, the cost of a Tesla and everything, you know, are people, you know, in the poverty levels are going to be able to afford these? So I think until we put all the barrier of success on the table, you know, for discussion and resolution, you know, we just got to make the transition practical.
Yeah, and I think you, you are making very important and real points. This is a rapidly evolving sector. The technology is advancing very rapidly and it does have a lot of effects on grid stability and resilience and security. And we are going to need to be addressing these all in real time as this rollout is, is taking place. So in no way do I want to undermine or undersell that there, there are challenges associated with this. But the direction that the nation seems to be heading is towards vehicle electrification. And so preparing adequately, I think, makes sense.
Yeah, but I think the point is though, you know, once again, going back to the optimism, we should embrace right now as, you know, one of the first, you know, cities to, you know, bring this forward and get ready for it. But once again, is with any type of new system that comes in, we got to be ready to make the modifications and the adaptations to make it more fully sustainable and practical.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No, that's, transition is going to be more 2050, I think. LJ, surprised, you're up again.
You know, the greatest thing about being the Public Works Director for the City of Virginia Beach is the variety of things we get to talk about. You all have a great job. You get to talk about all these different things and I'm fortunate that I get to as well. The next item that we have up is a presentation on Croatan Beach. This is an informational, just an update as to where we, where we stand with Croatan Beach and some issues as it relates to the shared use of, or the shared interests of both Croatan Beach and Rudy Inlet. And I'm grateful that I am not trying to run the computer today.
I still remember the old transparency slides. They worked every time.
All right. Two of three. Good luck, Jeremy. I hope yours works better. Good luck, Jeremy. I hope yours works better.
All right, thank you, LJ. I'm Dan Adams with the Public Works Coastal Engineering, and I'm pleased to provide the staff briefing to detail the past and current conditions on Croatan Beach. And more importantly, the city's plan for future sand nourishment activities to enhance the level of storm protection and provide a safe recreational beach at Croatan. I've done this before, I promise.
Little pause in our action today.
Was that me? I think it's working now. I think it's working. Yep. Thank you very much. Sorry for those glitches. All right, the presentation outlined for today is we're going to go over a brief history of Rudy Inlet. You can't talk about Croatan Beach without a quick discussion of Rudy Inlet. It has a major impact. We'll go over a chronology of prior studies and reports. And we're really going to focus on the 2016-17 Croatan Shoreline Assessment and talk about sand placement history at Croatan, and more importantly, what are our next steps? So I look back at Rudy Inlet. Rudy Inlet is a man-made inlet. Croatan Beach is situated updrift of this tidal inlet, and it requires year-round sand bypassing. The picture in the upper left is a pre-1950s. Rudy Inlet was a tidal marsh. That's really all it was. In heavy rain events, water would flow out. In high tidal events, water would flow in. And moving down to the picture on the lower right, that's, was how the Rudy Inlet weir and jetty infrastructure evolved and kind of set up for our current dredging bypass operation. It's still pretty much, this is in the same configuration as that today. So the, this inlet infrastructure, it allows sand bypassing and includes a weir that controls the beach template, if you will, of Long Croatan Beach. And we'll talk more about that. This busy little slide. The takeaway here is just to make the point, we have a longshore current that moves across the oceanfront. It transports 250,000 cubic yards of sand that has to be mechanically dredged and moved over the inlet. If we did not do that, the inlet would shoal in. We would not have a navigation inlet. What drives sand transport is wave energy, not just during storm events, but all the time. It doesn't always move from south to north. It moves in both directions, but predominant drift is from south to north at about a two-to-one ratio. There's that river of sand that moves in the active wave. Swashen moves that material. If the inlet wasn't here, sand would just naturally move up the beach. It would not necessarily build up on Croatan naturally. So just an overview of the weir and jetty system. It's, looks a little complicated. It's not that complicated when you examine it. The weir and jetty infrastructure allows the majority of sand bypassing with the city's dredge Rudy II, which operates in that yellow box. And that allows the main channel to stay open for navigation most of the time. The preponderance of sand, about 90% of it moves across that weir into the sand trap. The Rudy II gets about 65% of that material. A 25% fraction actually makes its way into the inlet. Another 10% works around the opening of the inlet. And that has to be dredged several times a year by the Army Corps Fleet of Dredges. They come in to remove areas of spot shoaling. And on about a, ideally, a three-to-four-year cycle, the Army Corps does a contract dredging event where they completely dredge the entire federal channel down to design depth plus a couple of feet for advanced maintenance. And that was last done spring of last year. And 50,000 cubic yards from the Outer Deposition Basin was placed on Croatan Beach. And we'll talk about that again in a second. So the weir impacts, it's a, it's a sheet-pile weir. It acts as a screed, if you will. It kind of holds the plan form of Croatan Beach in place. And that, there's what we call an inflection point that tries to mimic the location of that natural sand flow. So that we want 90% of that sand to come over the weir in a controlled environment versus going around the structure and causing more shoaling at the mouth of the inlet. Now, Croatan, it's a very narrow beach. It's subject to storm and wave energy impacts. The shoreline position oscillates. If we have a large storm event, we'll get sometimes a very alarming retreat of the shoreline. Shoreline bounces back fairly quickly. We, and lesser wave energy, we get what we call seasonal recovery, where that material that was washed off the beach from wave energy, it gets moved out into the bar system. And then during general or wave activity, it does slowly migrate back onto the beach. So we usually see recovery of the shoreline in terms of years. The dunes take much longer to recover. They need a, an expansive dry beach to pick up that wind-blown sand to maintain and re-nourish the dune system. Sand nourishment helps with that. And the amount that can be placed is somewhat limited by the weir. If we overbuild the beach, it's going to overwhelm this system, and we'll have serious shoaling in the inlet. So just take a look at some prior studies. Rudy Inlet and Croatan Beach have been studied extensively. The current inlet infrastructure operations are the result of extensive engineering analysis to achieve some dredge efficiency and safe navigation of the inlet. In 2016-17, the city commenced a Croatan Beach shoreline assessment with the firm Moffett Nickel. And that's really going to be the focus of the rest of the briefing. Croatan Shoreline Assessment. The study was undertaken after several years of unusually severe wave climate and some alarming shoreline and dune retreat and losses with minimal seasonal recovery. We typically would see some losses in the winter months, recovery in the summer. We went for a number of years where we just, we had stronger wave energy and almost zero recovery. And the impact was obvious to the beach. Going back to Hurricane Isabel, 2003, the dunes were trimmed back to what I refer to as a historical extent. They were all the way back to the crest of the dune. After that, we had about 10 years of fairly robust growth up to about 2013. And then we saw that about five-year period of losses, no recovery. So the objectives of the study, it's limited here. There's a lot there. We're not going to go in detail of all of it. But we wanted to look at what level of protection does the current beach profile provide? Do dredging practices influence shoreline and dune position? And consideration of sea level rise? And then to develop some concepts to enhance the beach and dune profile to provide a higher level of protection? And we also worked closely with the Croatan Civic League. I see Mike Kelly came out for the briefing. Thank you, Mike. And some other members of the Civic League worked with us very closely to shape the objectives of the study. And we appreciate, we really appreciate that. So just, the data compilation occurred in 2016. We had the community briefing in November of that year. Took that feedback, finalized the study, and the final report was issued in 2017. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of detailed slides, but this is just a representative slide of many historical shoreline profiles we were able to pull together for the study. The one thing I just wanted to point out for later reference is the red line indicates the shoreline position in 2011. That was after, you know, 10 years, about eight years after Isabel or so, and we've had some decent recovery. Shoreline was in a fairly good position then before we started to see the retreat. Now, I'm going to start talking about the model and the coming slides, but I just wanted to go over a few definitions here of a typical beach profile. The dune crest, that's literally just the top of the dune. That has fairly stayed fairly stable at Croatan over the years. Dune toe is more dynamic. We've seen oscillation in the dune position. And that's basically just where the bottom of the dune meets the flat part of the beach or the beach berm. And the beach berm is, like I said, the flat part of the beach generally from the toe of the dune out to mean high water. Habitable structures, that basically means the house. That's where the primary dwelling that sits on the lot. And we'll also be talking about non-habitable structures. Those are things such as fences, decks, gazebos, and sheds. So we, some more definitions here. There's a lot of confusion about, we hear people talking about dune breaching and dune overtopping. Now, we have had some dune overtopping at Sandbridge. That's where the wave run-up goes over the dune. You can have some lowering of the dune crest. You get some flooding in the back dune area. Dune breaching, we have not seen. We don't want to see that. That would be where the entire dune structure is eroded, and then the arisen seas flood and start attacking structures. So we, for our modeling criteria, we developed three general criteria. One was a beach profile that would prevent wave overtopping. And then some other criteria we developed, avoiding impacts to habitable structures and the 100-year storm event. And this is your classic level of protection for a typical shore protection project. You want to protect the dwellings and the primary structures from damage from wave run-up. A higher level of protection would be trying to avoid impacts to those other structures, the non-habitable structures. And then avoiding wave overtopping and impacts to the dune crest, that's even a higher level of protection still. So we modeled all three of those considerations using, let me back up. Yeah, yeah, I guess sorry. Using a wave run-up and dune erosion model called S-Beach. We looked at the existing beach condition in 2015 from a post-storm profile. So we looked at it in a worst-case condition, if you will. We ran storms of various return periods or intensities. We looked at the 20-year storm, the 25, the 50, and most importantly, the 100 to see how the adopted criteria impacts the existing beach profile and what we needed to do to enhance that. So interestingly, the beach performed very well. There were no homes at all, or no habitable structures impacted by wave run-up for the 100-year storm event. In the area shaded in yellow and red, there was some wave overtopping of the dune system and some impacts to those other structures. And then we added a one-and-a-half-foot of sea level, the arisen sea level, to the model. Did the wave run-up analysis. Results, as expected, weren't nearly as favorable. Under that condition, pretty much the entire dune system would be impacted. We've had wave overtopping and impacts to non-habitable structures. And in five of those eight segments on that map, you would also likely experience impacts to habitable structures. So some other criteria we wanted to develop for coming up with an engineered beach profile in addition to storm protection. We wanted a wider beach for safe recreation, lifeguard stands, emergency vehicle access, and the such. So the takeaway was the existing beach profile is adequate to provide protection to habitable structures, but the dune and berm enhancement was needed to provide protection for other structures, minimize wave run-up, and provide that wider, safer recreational beach. So a beach profile was developed, accomplished those aforementioned goals. Not going to bore you with this too much. This is basically just a plan view showing the advancement of the shoreline that would be achieved from that design at the north, and then this is the southern end of Croatan Beach. So we, the project was designed. We created the Croatan Beach Restoration CIP in the FY 1718 budget, designed the recommended beach profile. We obtained permits for placement via a sand truck haul. We bid the project in 2018 with unfavorable bid results. The local, or the closest sand pit for that project was temporarily and unexpectedly closed. I think there was a death in the family, and they were closed when we were out to bid. So the contractors were sourcing material from Western Tidewater. So the cost was much more than the budget would allow. So we did not execute that contract. We did not rebid it in 2019 and 2020. And at that time, the Rudy Inlet Outer Deposition Basin became a better sand source option. The Army Corps was moving forward on trying to bid and execute that contract. Less sand than we needed to build the designed beach, but it was a very economical and efficient method of delivery. So we did seize on that. And this is a sand placement history. The most recent placement was in April, May of 2022 from the Outer Deposition Basin and the Rudy Inlet dredging contract that added about 50,000 cubic yards to the berm. And we also did that the last time we dredged the Outer Deposition Basin back in 2008. About 50,000 cubic yards went to widening the berm. The activities in between were smaller volumes that were used to bolster the dune system. So just a little bit more on the assessment. The current weir dimension, it doesn't allow for any additional widening really above what we have designed. Like I said, it would just, it would overwhelm the system. But we are going to evaluate that. We have an upcoming project. CIP 10617 is the Rudy Inlet weir replacement project. We're going to kick off design on that later this year. The weir, it's a steel structure. It has about a 25-year design life. It's up for replacement. But instead of just replacing it in kind, we're going to take another look at what modifications we could make to the weir and the inflection, the inflection point to address this anticipated one-and-a-half-foot of sea level rise and to get some incremental advancement of the shoreline at Croatan. So we're going to take a look at that. And also, the other recommendations in the report, we are doing, we're surveying the beach twice a year. We closely monitor the condition of the beach. We've had some recovery since 2017, and some sand has been added to the system. But we need more sand to fully achieve the study recommendations and build out that profile. Got ahead, one slide ahead. Now, we, actually, we prefer to use sand sources obtained from outside the system when available. The Outer Deposition Basin is a great source. And it's actually more preferred than mining sand out of the trap. We do have a permit that allows us to get 20,000 cubic yards out of that sand trap. But that is a somewhat risky proposition to accrue 20,000 cubic yards of material to be able to do something with it. We have to stand down the dredging operations, allow that sand to accumulate, and that introduces a risk of shoaling. So finally, got to the end here. Next steps. We have an opportunity to obtain up to 120,000 cubic yards of sand for Croatan Beach as part of the next resort beach renourishment cycle that the Army Corps is planning to advertise for bids this fall and execute in early 2024. That sand would come from the next phase of the Norfolk Harbor deepening project. So we are working to modify our permits to change the sand source using our same Croatan Beach template design that was previously permitted. We'll be coming to council and asking for permission to execute a MOA with the Corps to incorporate that work into their contract. And then we'll follow up with that with planting some beach grass and sand fencing. We'll continue to do our ongoing beach profile survey and monitoring, and we'll do periodic nourishments as needed. We're going to be looking at, in the future, every time we dredge Rudy Inlet, which ideally is on a three-to-four-year cycle, it went much longer in the prior cycle. Federal funding is now coming back and is more consistent for that program. But every time we dredge Rudy Inlet, it's an opportunity to get 50,000 from the Outer Deposition Basin. And when we re-nourish Resort Beach, which is more on a six-year cycle, we're going to look at an opportunity to also add a larger volume of material to Croatan Beach. And repeat that and monitor, and we should be in good shape in the near and short term. Now, looking long range, the city's comprehensive sea level rise study, recommended tidal gates at Rudy Inlet and Lynnhaven Inlet at some time in the future. Don't know when, that would need to be done. And that would be the chance to really look at it, complete reconfiguration of that weir and jetty inlet. Weir and jetty infrastructure, advance that so we can get some substantial advancement of the shoreline at Croatan. And until that happens, we're only going to be able to make some modest advancements of the shoreline. With that, discussion and questions? Sure, please do.
Dan mentioned that last year, we added 50,000 cubic yards to the beach. We did immediately. Immediately after, if you recall, we had a series of door easters that came in and did a fair bit of damage. That has raised a level of concern from some of the members of the community. As Dan also mentioned, we're looking to place about 120,000, plus or minus 120,000 cubic yards of material. This would bring us to the design that we identified in the 2017 study for the area south of Twilight. It's important to note that we have worked with the Civic League to let them know that that's our intent. It's our desire to get that sand as part of the harbor dredging project, which means that we're partnering with the Corps of Engineers. The Corps will pay a pretty good share for the sand that we put on the resort beach, but they do not pay the same share for the material put on Croatan. We believe we have adequate resources to pay for the share that will go onto Croatan, but we probably don't have enough to do that plus something else. There are some members of the Croatan community that want us to do a plus something else. So at this point, we are following the recommendations of our consultant and recommendations of staff, working to rebuild the berm as the 2017 plan identified, and that's our current path forward. And so with that, I'll give, I just wanted to give you a little bit of feedback because I know that some of you are hearing information from residents of the community, and I wanted to make sure that you were aware that we were aware.
Rosemary?
Thank you so much. I really want to compliment LJ and his staff. They've really worked hard, and they've been very tuned in with the community and working with the community on this. And to me, this is a very complicated issue. I'm not an engineer, and, you know, a lot of this, I struggle to understand. I'm doing my best, and we've got great, great help with our engineers. And they have a fine line because Rudy Inlet, federal law requires them to keep Rudy Inlet clear. So they have to be really careful bringing in the sand and making sure that Rudy Inlet stays clear. Working with the Army Corps of Engineers is way better than trucking the sand in, which was originally what was going to happen. They're going to have to start the project a little later than they thought, but they'll be able to finish it faster than they thought. And it won't be disruptive to the neighborhood by bringing in all these trucks, bringing in the sand, and it'll be cheaper, too. So they've really found a really very, very good solution. And they've also listened about the weir because there's some very smart people that live in Croatan, and they were concerned about the weir, that it needed to be higher than what it is now with sea level rise and all that, and it would do a better job. And they're really taking that into consideration and listening to that. So I really, really appreciate it. So there's some concern about the dunes, and I think I've talked to several of you about the dunes. You're going to have to help me if I don't do this. So the berm supports the dunes. Did I get that right?
Yes, ma'am.
So once the berm is set, the dunes are going to naturally accrete and build up again. But there is some feeling that we should be putting sand on the dunes as well. And right now, we financially don't have it, and I'm not sure that engineering, they agree with that. But like I say, I'm not an engineer. So you heard me bring up beaches and waterways, and so this group has asked for us to reconvene beaches and waterways to look into this issue so that we can have, you know, a better look at it. I did go to Barry Knight to see if there was a chance for any money for this from the state, and really didn't think so. And I think you said federally, it doesn't qualify, federal money.
It doesn't because there's not a federal program for Croatan, whereas there is on the resort beach as a, as part of our overall protection. That's correct.
So we really got to start thinking about appointing people for beaches and waterways. And I've talked to several of you that you also have dune situations with District Nine, District Six, and probably District Eight. But in the long run, it affects all of us. So we're really, please need to find, and it's geographic. You've got to have someone from each district to be on the beaches and waterways. And I'm also hearing, and Worth might want to say something about this. He's been having encroachment issues, and maybe beaches and waterways could look at those as well. But I want to thank the Civic League. They've really worked hard. They've done their due diligence, and including, there's a lot of people that live right on the oceanfront, and they're concerned. And I can understand their concern because it's their home, and we dealt with this in Sandbridge years ago, that we don't want to be like Rodanthie Beach and be losing these beautiful homes to, you know, we, safety is going to be one of our biggest concerns, and that's what they're concerned about. So I think we'll just do our due diligence and make sure this is the right path to be on, notwithstanding that we have a great professional staff. So I really appreciate the presentation, what's been done today, and it's a complicated issue, but maybe we all learned something. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara?
Well, we've been talking about having a plan for all of our resort beaches for many years, and we haven't gotten there yet. It's pretty impressive, but we're getting closer. But I was really surprised when you even mentioned the possibility of truck hauls again, because I thought that was a thing of the past. There's no way in the world we'll ever replenish all these beaches with truck hauls. We've got some pretty deep bar pits because we tried that at one time. I hope that's not a possibility in the future. But we do have to really look at these offshore sources that we have and that we're depending on. And I would just, certainly not now, but at some point, would really like to know where all of our offshore sources are and whether they are dependable for the long range or they are in danger in any fashion. I think we, off of harbor dredging seems to be a long ways away, but anyway, it's better than not having anything. It's better than a truck haul. But these offshore sources, of course, replenishing Sandbridge would never have been a possibility had it not been for identifying that offshore source that came about really suddenly back in the late 80s. So I would really like to know more about where all the sources are and how dependable they look for the future.
Okay. Anyone else? You have work?
Just a quick question.
Mr. Hanson, can you tell us what the price is on this project?
For the city share for the
City share.
$120, but
$35 cubic yard.
He must have put the total.
Installation and everything.
I think you gave the right number.
Yeah. There's been a little bit of, there's been a little bit of up and down as it relates to fuel, and I know where we were with the truck haul was almost $9 million, and so it's a much lower number than that, but I have to, we'd have to go back and take a look at it.
We have a million and a half available in the Croatan CIP budget, and we've got to adequately cover that portion of the contract. Beach turnover prices are hard to pin down because there's a lot of seasonal fluctuation based on industry capacity, but we're confident, we don't need to seek additional funding for that course of action.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thanks a bunch. And on deck is LJ.
Mr. Mayor, this one is a request of a couple of council members. Several council members have been hearing about the city's fleet department and looking at the various, various and myriad different equipment and apparatus that we have in fleet and asked for our overview of fleet management. So LJ and his team put together a presentation.
LJ.
Thank you. It's actually my pleasure to introduce Jeremy Klein. He's the Deputy Director of Department of Public Works. I don't think he's had an opportunity to give a presentation to city council yet. Jeremy has been with us for just about a year now, and one of the things that we've asked Jeremy to do is to oversee fleet operations. And I would tell you that fleet has gone through a number of changes over the course of the last two-plus years, and I'll let Jeremy tell you a little bit about it.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, LJ, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council. It's my pleasure to be here and end on a celebratory note of everything we've been doing in fleet. And so just a couple of points of discussion. We're going to talk about the organizational overview, the changes in fleet management, of which are many, current hurdles that we're facing, and just a lot of the initiatives that we've endeavored to partake in, parts management, technology modernization, a couple of pilots with Enterprise Fleet, the car rental agency, electrification of vehicles, and apprenticeship program. So the organizational overview, we have 3,900 assets. That's everything from your regular sedan to the dredge and keeping the beaches clean and full, right? 67 technicians, they do about 16,000 work orders yearly. So that's everything from an oil change to swapping out transmissions. So 67 technicians, 16,000 work orders. It's just a testament of the hard work that our teams do. We have four annexed locations, Holland Drive, Leroy Dam Neck, and the city landfill. And we have 10 key service areas. So service areas, that means maintaining the vehicles, contract management, buying the vehicles, selling the vehicles, acquiring parts, and all the things in between to include fuel, maintaining fuel, all the regulatory aspects of that. So organizational changes. We have a new fleet administrator via an internal promotion, Mr. Scott Dickens. He's actually here in attendance. Very happy to have him. The great thing about Scott is he came in as a shop supervisor, and he's worked his way up all the way to the top seat, and everything we're doing wouldn't be possible without him. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge him and the North Star he is for us in making sure we're staying on the right track for fleet. Organizational development, training opportunities, and restructure for morale. So we're providing more opportunity for our supervisors to get out of just their home shops. So if you're light duty, you can go to heavy duty. If you're heavy duty, maybe you want to learn about helicopters. You know, we have everything from armored vehicles to weed eaters, helicopters. We have a Navy and Air Force. You know, you name it, we got it. And so just to, you know, to prevent stagnation, we're giving them those opportunities to learn and expand their toolkits, both figuratively and literally. Technology modernization and data-informed decision-making. So great news, we're moving to the cloud. So the current utilization of technology is program-based, but we are going to be moving into the cloud, which is going to open up a whole new world of capabilities for us. And we're investing in our people. We're not too worried about the great resignation because we still have a lot of great, great people that we can work with, that we can really expand upon and make fleet a place that everyone wants to come and work at. So hurdles, increased costs, right? We just talked about budget, talked about the increasing costs of vehicles across the spectrum. Add to that supply chain delays. So what used to take a couple of days now takes a couple of months. And so those work orders we were talking about, you know, sometimes it would take a week maybe to train, to trans, take something out of a car and put it back in. Now we're looking at multi-month delay. And so we have to get innovative in how we do that. Challenges with standardization. So basically, we're trying to get as many of the same types of vehicles in as many departments as possible. It streamlines processes, it allows us to turn faster wrenches, move more vehicles in and out. It helps lower costs because we just have the same types of parts. We don't have to have 10 different parts for 10 different vehicles. And we have an aging fleet. So the, I know the print is small, but what I really want to focus on is the peaks and valleys, right? So we go through a period where we buy a bunch of vehicles, and because we buy a bunch of vehicles, it basically plateaus our replacement, and then we get to a point of time where everything needs to be replaced again, and so we come asking for a whole bunch more money, and then it's just up and down, up and down. The other key piece of this is we have 463 vehicles that are over 10 years old. We have 86, probably more at this point, that are 20-plus years old. So average condition, we have, so this is for, we'll get into some shop talk, the white fleet. So this is everything from sedans, pickup trucks, and half-ton trucks. This doesn't include our bulldozers or our dredges or our larger pieces of equipment. This is strictly white fleet. And so we have just shy of 1,200, and their average age is 9.2 years. They get about 6,800 miles a year on them. We have, our average annual acquisition is 81, so we're buying about 81 vehicles a year. 2014 is the average model year, but we hold them almost 15 years. So we drive them till sometimes wheels do fall off. So the initiatives, how, so it's kind of a grim picture, right? I'm telling you, we don't have parts, the vehicles cost more. How are we going to navigate these shores? Parts management, fleet technology, the enterprise pilot program, electrification and apprenticeship. These are all innovative ideas that the staff has come up with, that they're moving for enthusiastically to overcome what we're facing. Parts management. So historically, we managed our own parts. I meant more staff. We had a large inventory of nuts and bolts and engines that we had to keep track of. It was costly, it was time-consuming. So what happened is we partnered with a company, ManCon, and we established a contract for one year with four one-year extensions. It allows fleet to enjoy a wider range of parts purchasing via ManCon sources so we can relieve the burden of staff, they can focus on fixing the vehicles, ManCon can focus on getting us the parts that we need. Their inventory specialists are onsite at three of the floor fleet annexes. We don't have anyone at the city landfill. That person is at the Holland Road Annex where the other waste management teams are. So again, we're streamlining and making it efficient so they understand the specific parts that they need. Essentially, what happens is the fleet technician sends an email or sends a message through our system. The ManCon team receives it, they fulfill the order, and they deliver it. So we stay on the vehicles, we never leave. Fleet technology modernization. So we're moving into the cloud, as I mentioned, and that's going to give us a brand-new world of analytics and dashboarding. Essentially, we'll be able to have an app where end-users can send text messages, they can view the status of the repair of their vehicles. Now, these are all our internal customers, PD, municipal center, fire department, you name it. They can see the, kind of when you order a pizza from Domino's, right? You see, where's my pizza? Okay, we're making it. Hey, we're on our way. Same thing here, only we're, our pizzas cost thousands and thousands of dollars. Increased customer interaction and efficiency. Once again, they can log on, they can see the status of where we're at in their repair. We can communicate with them. We can send emails and text messages, write directly to them saying, hey, your vehicle's ready, come pick it up. And we'll implement a key valet system, which is a fancy way of saying motor pool. So as you saw, we only get 6,800 miles per year on these vehicles. So we have a lot of low-use vehicles we can start to evaluate. Key valet is a system that allows us to have a motor pool where you can go online, you can reserve a vehicle, you can see the types of vehicles we have available. You put your reservation in, you go down, you put your code into a key box, the key comes out, you drive, you do what you need to do, you come back, you return it. All that data from the vehicle is uploaded into the system, so we're keeping an on-time analysis of the condition of that vehicle. So it's no more of waiting till, you know, the red lights come on on the dashboard. We know exactly what's happening with that vehicle. And we can also start to swap out and piggyback, like Rex on the great presentation he gave. Once we start to move into the EV sphere, now we can put those EVs into the motor pool. We can start to gradually feed those EVs in and start to build out those best practices, as was mentioned earlier. Enterprise fleet management. So Enterprise, a car rental company, they have a fleet management program that provides us, similar with ManCon, an opportunity to purchase and resell vehicles via their network of dealerships. So currently, we drive it, as I mentioned, until we get no more use, and then we have to auction it off. This allows us to prioritize vehicles and actually resell them at their peak resale points. We're actually going to be making some money back. Enterprise is able to accommodate the sedans, the vans, pickups, and half-ton trucks, so our white fleet. Projected benefits are, we know, we don't have to struggle with trying to acquire vehicles because they have a larger footprint economically. They get to the front of the line where we have to wait until spots open up, then we have to battle with all the surrounding cities to fill those spots, and then even if we get those spots, there's no guarantee those vehicles will actually be purchased and delivered. Using Enterprise, not only do we have their larger buying power and structure, they also have dealerships all over the country. So if we're in a tough spot, we can't get a vehicle, they have dealerships that they can leverage. So we get a two-for-one almost. So it's improving internal customer service. That means we're going to have a nicer-looking fleet. We're going to have a more reliable fleet. It's not going to have to be in all the time because the average age for the resale at this point is five years. So we're looking at everyone getting a newer vehicle theoretically every five years, depending on the market, but we're not contractually obligated. We can hold it longer if we need to. We can hold it longer if we, if we need to, based on budgetary restraints. But this gives us an opportunity to really leverage that, that buying power. And again, we can standardize the fleet. They'll present us with vehicles that are fit for what we're looking for at the best possible price. Let me go back, actually. With this, we actually are looking at a pilot for our human services department because they have a large number of this white fleet vehicle profile. And looking across the city, we identified about 41 vehicles that we could leverage within this pilot program. We can sell those off to Enterprise. We would purchase 41 of these vehicles and then implement them to human services to really start to build out the data and the analytics of whether this would be a good program for us. The city of Chicago and Savannah, who have very equal fleets to us, actually use this program and are very happy with what it has done, both in the tangible savings and the costs, but also just in the intangibles of customer satisfaction. And so what we would do is we'd roll out these 41 vehicles, we'd be able to maintain the data on them, see what the, the usage is on them. Once that five years comes, we could sell those off and recoup almost half of the value that we spent. So just for, for comparison, right now, we buy, we run it until there's nothing left on it, and we auction it off, and we try to recoup whatever we can. In this model, we buy it, we use it to its highest resale point, we sell it, we take those profits, and we can roll them into the next purchase there by saving us money. So that peak and valley that we looked at earlier, now it's going to start to flatline because we'll be able to start trending out what we need in terms of vehicles and departments. It'll also help us identify low use. So if right now we're using 50 vehicles, based on the data, maybe we can reduce it to 30 vehicles without any adverse impact to city operations or use. Electrification. So good news, based on that, that third goal Rex mentioned, we're already starting to look at it. So we're, everyone's moving towards electrification coast-to-coast. There are more than 3 million EVs on the road and 130,000 public chargers, as the previous presentation let you know, so I'm not going to hit you with the same data. But what we're doing is we're partnering with Cadmus as well. They're looking at our fleet and helping us identify those vehicles that will be best served as an electric vehicle. To caveat then onto the enterprise program, should we start to roll this out into a larger program for the city, we'll be in a position to maneuver into the EV sphere a lot faster and with a lot more agility than what other cities currently would be able to do. Because again, they have to wait in line for those vehicles to become available. We can call Enterprise and say, hey, we want it, we want five, we want 10 EVs. We build it in, and they can get them to us at a faster rate. So electrification's going to be implemented, again, in gradual increments to assure success and best practices. We don't want to just shotgun this and hope for the best. We want to be optimistic but cautious. So we're going to develop those best practices and slowly roll it out to, to the best of our ability. This is something I'm very excited about. Mentioned earlier that we're investing in our people. We're developing an apprenticeship program. With the apprenticeship program, we're going to be developing people who, who don't have the skills or the education, but the desire to be mechanics, and that can be from any sphere. With this apprenticeship program, they get 2,000 hours of hands-on training from an experienced mentor at our new quick-loop service lane that we're developing right now. The training's based on national industry standards, it's customized to the needs of Fleet, so we're not going to be training people and they're going to be leaving us. It's going to be developed to meet the needs of what we have. The Department of Labor for the state, when I was speaking to them about this, are very excited, and they asked us what took us so long. So it's going to be something that hopefully will build out into a broader program down the road for Public Works. But this is something that I feel we, we hit the ground, right? We, we meet people where they're at, we're giving them applicable skills while still helping the taxpayers, and frankly, helping me let LJ know I'm getting my job done by getting vehicles on the road. So everyone's happy. And with that, any questions?
Okay, Chris and Michael. For the presentation.
Yes.
As it relates to the apprenticeship program, are, are we working collaboratively, collaboratively with the schools?
We will be.
Locational?
We'll, we'll be reaching out. We're looking at everything from justice-impacted individuals to high schools and everything in between. We're still in the infancy of developing it, but that is the ultimate goal.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Klein. I appreciate your presentation, and thank you to Mr. Hanson as well. Sorry, I'm just making some notes here because I have a few questions. I had a cha, I've had a chance on a couple of occasions to visit City Garage. I think, I think one place, right? I know you operate in multiple different locations, but it's an unbelievable operation. And the people who work there, the men and women who work there are incredibly dedicated professionals. And I encourage council members, if you haven't had a chance to visit there, to just go and look at the depth and breadth of their expertise and their teamwork, and what a team. And they're really, really impressive people.
Absolutely.
And so I just want to, you know, give them a shout-out. We received an update, I don't know, months ago about a new design for the police cruisers. Can you tell us when we can expect to see those on the road? They look great.
So I, I think, we'll get you a better update. So I think Chief Newt Gate, the police department may have received one or two that they're piloting through the city to get public reaction, right? So we shared with council, say, hey, we're interested in doing this, let us know if you had any concerns or issues with it. So I think they're piloting one or two vehicles right now to get public reaction, and once they get a sense of that, then they may start to roll it out and start to order it and, and get the fleet shop to paint it in those new lines and new colors. I think that's.
Every time I see one on the road, I look for it. You haven't seen one yet.
The fleet administration center does. Yep.
It is not being done as a large rollout, not, not yet.
Yeah, it's a, it will be a phase as the new vehicles come online. I think it's safer for the officers. I think it's safer for the citizens. In retrospect, I mean, just, I mean, I'm not being critical, but even just looking at that, you, you can't even read what that says. It's going fast.
We'll get the Batmobile back, yeah.
But anyway, it's a great, I think it's a, you know, it's a good design, and I, and I'm looking forward to seeing them on the road, you know, as they roll out. I have a question about the partnership with Enterprise. Correct me if I'm wrong, but previously, the city has purchased a large amount of vehicles from local car dealerships, correct?
That is correct.
Are you contemplating ending those relationships and entering one with Enterprise? Because I think, and it sounds like there's a lot of value and there's a lot of efficiency as part of that partnership, but I also think that our local dealerships, and it looks like you have lots of different types of vehicles, so it looks like you're working with lots of local dealerships. They employ a lot of people, they're, they're locals, they're, they've been supporting the city for a long time, and a lot of people work there who rely upon those jobs in order to make a living for their families. So have you thought about that as part of the transition?
We, we have. This is, this is a, we put it up here as a program and as a pilot, we specifically identified that this is something that we're looking at doing. The, the value of going with Enterprise allows us the opportunity to do a few things that, that are important to us. One is to reduce the age of our overall, the overall age of our fleet. One of the other things that Jeremy really didn't, didn't touch very heavy on is, right now, we, we can't buy vehicles. Not, not from our local dealers, not from our contracts, they're on the state contract. We get in line to get in line to get in line, and by the time we're in line, they tell us that the spots are full. It, it is really a challenge in this post-COVID world. We don't know what the ultimate long, long-range thing is, and, and actually, what we're looking at with Enterprise might be a stopgap. It might be just something that we, that we do for a year or two until we can learn how to do it. But one of the things that I think Enterprise offers us is the opportunity to learn how to manage fleets in a way that we have not managed fleets before.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, it was something that LJ brought to me, and we talked about it quite a bit. The big issue it came down to is us not moving and trying something different was hindering me from being able to execute and meet your policy goals, right? Like, for example, some of the, like the STR, we went to overnight crews to do some of the STR enforcement, and also the initial Stormwater BMP group, a lot of those we buy, those light equipment, light vehicles. And we were having a hard time finding vehicles or sourcing vehicles, and that meant we weren't able to get the staffing that we needed to get them out to do the job, as equipment continued to run down and break down as well. So it is something that we thought about, and as LJ mentioned, it's a pilot, and it doesn't necessarily mean this is going to be the status quo going forward, but we think this may give us an opportunity to get vehicles quicker and in a more reliable manner.
Thank you. I would be interested if, sorry, Mr.
I, I just, I just want to say, I want to add one other thing to it. The, the vehicles that we would be working with Enterprise on, if there's a service-related issue that needs to go back to the dealer, they would still go to the local dealership. So from that perspective, I don't believe that they would have the same impact to, to the local economy.
Okay, well, I, I think it's something we need to keep an eye on, particularly those, our dealerships in some ways are pillars of the business community and supporting communities in so many different ways, as we know. And I, I'd like to know more about what the impact would be on, on those relationships and what our, you know, historic purchases have been, what it would look like if we removed those purchases. Recognizing all the great things that you described, although that, I've had a different experience with Enterprise, but that's a different, different department. The final thing that I wanted, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the final thing I want to bring up, something about ambulances. We have a very special and very unique relationship with our volunteer EMS systems, as I'm sure you all are all aware, where the city provides a low interest or zero interest loan to the rescue squads in order to purchase the ambulances. But increasingly, they're having challenges in making those purchases because the cost of ambulances has gone up so high. I think previously, and the state provides some reimbursement, but they're now, they're only, they're only reimbursing up to, I think, $250,000, and that's part of a grant program if you qualify. And ambulances now are 375-plus. So we've got to figure out a way, it's maybe not as much for the fleet, or maybe it is, because you maintain the ambulances, see exceptionally well. But we've got to figure out as a council about how to maintain these relationships. And because I'm hearing from the rescue squad systems that they're having more and more, more difficulty financing the, the purchase of those ambulances, and we can't afford to not have ambulances on the road. And we have a gap here that we need to address. And I, and I, and I actually, I don't know if it's appropriate for a briefing or a memo, but we need to get smart on this, figure out this issue with the ambulances, because it's, it's going to impact our ability to provide EMS services in the medium term.
Okay. Great. Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilor Belushi, that was one of the reasons behind the proposed budget, we proposed adding $700,000 towards the rescue council. And then I would, I would be, should acknowledge the fact that city council during COVID years sends a substantial amount of money, in the millions of dollars, to the rescue squads specifically. I think a lot of them use the money towards plusing up additional EMS apparatus as well. But you're, you're absolutely correct, sir. We're seeing a tremendous decrease in their fundraising, it's not to the level where it used to be. Or even if it was, it wouldn't be able to keep up with the cost inflation.
It doesn't keep up with the cost. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thanks a bunch. LJ will miss you.
All right. So Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is the last presentation before council's dialogue and comment. This will be an update on the items that'll come before you on your April 4th and your April 18th city council meetings.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. I will try to get through this relatively quickly. So for your April 4th meeting, you have a total of nine applications on the agenda. It's just a list, a list of them here. So the first item is an amendment to Section 104 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to the use of civil penalties. Some of the members may recall, back in September of 2020, city council approved an amendment to this section, just to further clarify which uses in the zoning ordinance can be assessed as civil penalty, specifically with relation to short-term rental violations. The current amendment before you on the 4th just provides additional clarification as to what sections of the ordinance can be assessed as a civil penalty, and then corrects a typographical error in that original ordinance. So this just shows you the language here, again, correcting that code reference section from 1903 to 2303, and then further adding language to include any section of the ordinance that applies to the use of a property as a short-term rental and stating that that can be assessed as a civil penalty. This item was heard by the planning commission at their March hearing and was unanimously recommended for approval. Item two is a modification of proffers associated with the 2016 conditional rezoning of property along Princess Anne Road, better known as formerly the Bio Park and now referred to as Innovation Park. The 2016 rezoning envisioned the development of the Bio Park to support medical and research institutions. As a part of that rezoning, the applicant did draft design and development guidelines to aid in the creation of an attractive and cohesive development in response to market demand and growth in other industry sectors. The applicant is now requesting a modification to that 2016 approval to amend the design and development guidelines for the park. I will note, this amendment only applies to 113 acres of the 146-acre park, since the property owner to the parcels on the west of Hudon Way opted not to be a party to the application simply because their site is already under development. So for those parcels, they'll still continue to be governed by the 2016 guidelines and So some of the changes proposed, in addition to just updating the name of the park to Innovation Park, the new design guidelines are designed to just be more user-friendly and allow for greater flexibility in building design and materials while still maintaining elements such as lighting and landscaping that contributes to the overall goal of the park to create a park-like setting. The updated document did also provide some clarification as to the review and approval process for applications within the park, particularly that additional review is required by the development authority. And I will just note, though, that that review doesn't supersede the typical review by the planning department and city council. The updated guidelines were presented to the TA-ITA committee, and they did raise some concerns about the shift in the focus of the park to a more industrial manufacturer, manufacturing nature. So staff has scheduled an additional meeting with the TA-ITA committee for this Thursday just to provide additional clarification on the proposal, try to help alleviate some of those concerns, and get additional input from that group. Staff did not receive any opposition to this request, and the planning commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application. Item three is a request for a modification of conditions to a conditional use permit for a multifamily housing project on parcel-zoned B4K, known as the 525 Historic Kempsville Apartments. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to modify the conditions of the 2012 approval to allow for the removal of non-residential uses that were initially proposed, and to increase the residential density to 186 units per acre for an overall density of 18.6 units per acre. This new proposal does replace two mixed-use buildings that were originally proposed with a single L-shaped apartment building right there on the corner of Oaks Mirror and Princess The new building will utilize the same design, materials, colors that are seen throughout the entire development, and the applicant did work diligently with the Fairfield Civic League and Historic Kempsville Citizen Advisory Committee throughout 2022.
Just want to ask you, is that the same developer or?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, they weren't getting the demand that they had hoped for the non-residential uses that they initially proposed, so they've come back to just do an entirely residential development.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Both of those groups did provide letters of support for the project. Staff hasn't received any opposition to the request, and again, the planning commission recommended approval of this application on their consent agenda in March. Item four is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at a newly constructed two-bedroom condo unit located at 180 Baltic Avenue, right at the corner of Baltic and 18th Street. Parking for this unit and a second unit on the site is provided at the rear of the parcel, particularly for this request, the spaces are shown on the slide in orange. There are no past violations associated with this site, and the proposal does comply with the STR regulations in the zoning ordinance. As such, the planning commission did recommend approval of the application As such, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application on the consent agenda. That was by a 6-0 vote with one abstention. Item five is another conditional use permit request, again for a short-term rental on the same parcel. It's another two-bedroom condominium unit, this one addressed at 503 18th Street. And again, same parking plan here, the spaces for this site are shown in purple. Again, no known violations, and it does comply with the STR regulations in the ordinance. Similarly, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this item, again, on the consent Item six is a request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor located at 737 First Colonial Road within the marketplace at Hilltop Shopping Center. More specifically, this request is for the application of permanent makeup within an existing salon on the site. The applicant isn't proposing any exterior changes to the building, and they anticipate one additional employee for the use. There is sufficient parking available within the shopping center, and no known opposition was received for this request. As such, again, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the application on their consent Item seven is another request for a tattoo parlor within an existing shopping center at 1776 Laskin Road. This applicant is proposing to open a body art studio, so this is for traditional tattooing within an existing 1,600-square-foot unit in the shopping center. Again, no exterior changes are proposed, they have sufficient parking, and only one employee is anticipated for the use. Staff did receive one letter of support for the application and is unaware of any opposition to the request. This item was unanimously recommended for approval on consent by the Planning Commission at their March hearing. Item eight is another request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor located at 2077 Lynn Haven Parking within, Parkway within the Salem Crossing Shopping Center. This request is for the addition of a permanent makeup services within an existing salon in the shopping center. Again, just one additional employee anticipated for the use. The Planning Commission, again, did vote unanimously in favor of the application. The final item on your April 4th agenda is a request for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor located at 2817 Shore Drive within the Cape Henry Plaza Shopping Center. This is another request to offer permanent makeup services within an existing salon in the shopping center. Again, only one employee is required for this use. There is sufficient parking on site, no known opposition to the request, and the Planning Commission, again, voted unanimously in favor of the application. Moving on to the items scheduled for your April 18th hearing, there are a total of eight items for your consideration at that meeting. Item one is an application for a street closure to close a 15-foot-wide portion of an unnamed and unimproved public alley between 650 South Atlantic Avenue and Lot 22 in Block 20 of Crowton Beach. This paper alley bisects two parcels referred to as Lot 10 and Lot 22, with Lot 22 fronting the beach and Lot 20 fronting South Atlantic Avenue. Between 1996 and 2007, City Council has approved the closure of all other portions of the alleyway within this block, so this is just the final piece to be closed. Staff did discuss this request at their viewers' meeting and determined that the closure was acceptable and would not result in any public inconvenience. I will note that if approved, the applicant would need to submit a re-subdivision plat just to vacate the interior property, property lines and incorporate this portion within the larger parcel. Staff has received no opposition to the request, and again, the Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the application. Item two is a request for modification of proffers for a site located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Virginia Beach Boulevard and North Oceana Boulevard. This site is within the greater-than-75-decibel-noise zone and the accident potential zone one. The site was conditionally rezoned in 2004 to conditional I-1 for an office warehouse use, however, the site was never developed. So the current applicant is coming back to modify the conceptual plan associated with that and the proffered elevations. They are still retaining a landscape buffer along the east and southern property lines to buffer from the adjacent residential, and have proposed an eight-foot-tall vinyl privacy fence along those property lines, just to further provide some visual buffer for those residential properties. They've also included a proffer to restrict the use of the property to solely office warehouse, just to make sure it doesn't develop with any of the more intense industrial uses that would typically be allowed within that I-1 district. And this just shows the updated building elevations. The majority of the building, so the majority of three sides, is just a gray metal panel. They have proposed brick veneer, or sorry, stone veneer along the Virginia Beach Boulevard elevation, and then the red, white, and blue there on the corner, which is fronting North Oceana, that is the office portion of the building. The applicant did send notifications to the surrounding property owners and invited them to a meeting to discuss the details of the request. Only one person was in, in attendance at that meeting and raised no objections to the application. Similarly to the other applications, staff hasn't received any opposition, and planning did vote in favor of this request. Item three is a request for a change in nonconformity to allow an additional building to be constructed at the Indian River Apartments and Town Homes Complex located at 10008 Mineola Drive. The proposed building will be used as a leasing office and amenity space for the complex. When this complex was initially developed, it was under previous zoning, and it was a permitted use for the residential. When the zoning ordinance was updated in 1973, the zoning classification was updated to B2, which no longer permitted that B2, or sorry, permitted the residential uses. However, since residential was permitted at the time of development, it's just considered a legal nonconforming use, which is why this change in nonconformity application is required. The proposed building elevations, it's going to be consistent with the additional buildings on the site. Staff has received two letters of support for the application from nearby residents and is unaware of any opposition to the request, and Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of the application at their March hearing. Item four is an alternative compliance request for the Kohl's Store located at Pembroke Mall. The applicant is requesting to install a wall sign larger than the 60-foot maximum allowed under the current Central Business Core Zoning District Regulations. Currently, there are two existing wall signs on the building, one fronting Virginia Beach Boulevard, the other fronting Constitution. This application is solely concerning that elevation fronting Virginia Beach Boulevard. The applicant just wants to add an additional 57.7 square foot sign to the existing sign on the, on the building, for a total of 20, 217.8 square feet of wall signage. Again, this sign was installed under the previous zoning regulation, so it was in compliance at the time that it was initially installed. That's the two 160-square-foot existing signs. So aside from not meeting that maximum allowable square footage requirement, the proposed sign does meet all of the CBC Design Guidelines related to signage. The applicant did submit this proposal to the Central Business District Association's Design Review Committee, and they are supportive of the request. The Planning Commission also voted in favor of recommending approval of the application at their March hearing. Items five and six are by the same applicant, both requesting a conditional use permit to operate a short-term rental at adjacent three-bedroom, single-family dwellings located at 509 and 511 19th Street. These dwellings were both constructed in 1945, and like I said, each contained three bedrooms. A total of six parking spaces are required for the use. They're currently shown as being provided on 509 19th Street and 507 19th Street. Since all three properties are under common ownership, the proposed parking plan is acceptable to staff. Again, no past violations associated with either of the units, and the requests do comply with the STR regulations in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the application on the consent Item seven is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental in the Dolphin Run Condominiums located at 303 Atlantic Avenue. The request is specifically for Unit 300, a three-bedroom dwelling unit within the condominiums. Dolphin Run is one of the condominiums that was granted a historical exception for parking per Section 2303 of the ordinance, so they only have to provide one parking space per unit as opposed to the one, typical one space per bedroom. There are no past violations associated with this unit, and the request does comply with the STR regulations in the ordinance. The Planning Commission did vote in favor of this application at their March hearing. And the final item is another conditional use permit request for a short-term rental at the Kamla Condominiums located at 2113 Atlantic Avenue. This request is for Unit C, a two-bedroom dwelling within the condominiums. Similar to the previous request, this site is also granted that historical exception for parking, so each unit only has to provide the one parking space rather than the one per bedroom. Again, no past violations associated with the unit, and it does comply with all the STR regulations. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this request, and that wraps up my brief. If you have any questions, I can certainly answer.
Any questions at all? Okay. Thanks a bunch. Hey, moving on now, council comments, anybody? Rocky, what's going on in District 1?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me go over a couple of items here. One is a car crashed into a pond near Parliament Drive last Thursday, March 21st, 24th, around 1800. A nearby resident of Carol Ann Farms, Sandy Wilson, ran out to assist. He was able to rescue the family of four through the sunroof of the sinking car, an eight-year-old, a 10-year-old, and a 16-year-old, and a father. The actions of Sandy Wilson on this day saved lives. And Sandy, I drove through the neighborhood looking for you and couldn't, and couldn't locate you. So if anybody talks to Sandy, let him know I'm trying to get in touch with him to personally thank him. But the actions of Sandy Wilson on that day certainly saved lives. And Sandy was quoted in an article as saying, he was quoted as saying, "It's what anyone would have done." I don't know if anyone would have done it, but I know Sandy did on that day and, and helped save that family. And so Sandy, please get in touch with me, and I'm gonna swing back through the neighborhood and see if I, if I can locate you. Now, on another note, March 24th, Virginia Beach Fire Department responded to the Indian Lakes Apartments at 5300 Block of Yellow Ninth Court off Indian River Road. According to the Virginia Beach Fire Department, firefighters got to the scene at around 6:00 PM and saw heavy smoke and flames coming from a second-story attic. The fire quickly spread to other units. This is the fourth significant fire to happen at the apartment complex within the last several years. It has been reported that in 2020, it displaced 31 people. December 2020, damaged 24 units. In June 22, displaced 20 people. So I immediately contacted Chief Pravitz about this to get more information about it, and subsequently, Councilmember Berluci called me about this. And we are certainly going to explore some ideas to help these folks. I, I don't know what's out there to help these folks, but I can only imagine that when they tuck their loved ones in, the fear they must feel knowing that these, these incidents has happened. And I certainly want to be a person that stands up for these folks, and, and we do anything we can to help them. And so I'll wait on Chief Pravitz's report on that, and I hope that we, like Councilmember Berluci said, we can explore some ideas of what we can do to help these folks, because if not us, then who? And again, it just must be terrifying to those folks at Indian Lakes Apartments as they tuck their loved ones in. So I look forward to hearing back from the chief, get some information, circle around with his folks, and explore some ideas to help these folks. But I, I want the folks of Indian Lakes Apartments to know that this incident doesn't fall on deaf ears, and we understand that, that we're going to try to get you some help. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Rocky, how about let's get a letter of recognition out to Sandy and give it to him. And, you know, with that fire, my wife and I stopped by a little later that evening, and I'll tell you what, it was a two-alarm fire. I think that it was in 1910 and '09 responded. The epitome of professionalism. But the amazing thing was the fact that they rescued about six animals.
Exactly right.
Out of there. And, you know, the, the one individual, Ms. Manager, we were at the fire graduation. One of, one of the new folks actually rescued a few cats. And I'll tell you what, you know, it was remarkable spirit that we have, and thanks for, you know, looking into that situation.
And, Mr. Mayor, a follow-up on that point of information is that the firefighters rescued seven animals, including three dogs, two cats, and two birds. So you're exactly right. They, they not only saved the residents there, but they saved the pets.
You got it. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Amelia?
I would like to mention that the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art really had a nice turnout for bringing in the Dr. Annette Gordon from Harvard about her book on Juneteenth. And it really was a very nice presentation there, so recommend Virginia MoCA. The second one was the World Cultural Festival. They had a very nice turnout, and Worth was there. When I got there, he was doing yamase, doing yoga, working away. I said, oh, my goodness. But he was involved, and Chief knew to get, so we got that done. And later on, our poor mayor was running from Pastor Eric Cox's funeral, but he didn't get there, and we're very happy that you came. One thing I want to mention is, and we both noticed that, Worth and I, people kept coming up to us and said the parking was horrendous. Lot of people had to park way down across the beach to walk to there because there was also a rescuing going on. So we really seriously have parking issues. We do need parking down there. Different people, some with their little children, trying to carry them to get, because they wanted to participate in both areas. So that is something we really need to look into, is getting adequate parking or something along that convention center.
And the sports center, too.
And the sports center. It was crowded.
Anybody else? Jen, and then Worth.
Let me get in front of you this time, because you cut me off.
You patiently wait.
So just a couple of announcements for April, and I may say it again next month. The NBC, April 13th, has their spring convention at the ATC at Tidewater Community College from 1 to 4. So small women, minority-owned businesses may want to check that out. And then for District 10, we have our first community meeting Monday, April 17th, at Green Run High School from 6:30 to 8:00. So that's the Monday after spring break. So just District 10, mark your calendars for April 17th, and I'll put stuff on Facebook, too.
Okay, great. Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I'm hearing from the community that we may be short one or maybe two early voting sites last fall. I think we were short an early voting site in the Kempsville area. And right now, we're not, have not come to terms with that for this fall, and also possibly the Sea-Tac early voting site. So we don't want to be too late in addressing this. We want everyone to be able to vote around the city, not just in limited areas.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Chris, and then Josh, and then Amelia.
On Thursday, March 23rd, the U.S. Minority Contractors Association opened up their first chapter in Virginia at the Hyatt and Town Center, and as well attended. So you may be receiving emails from them there. They weren't aware, or they do have a member of our Minority Business Council that was in attendance. But they have 25 other chapters around the country, so you all may be receiving some.
Okay, super. Josh, and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While she's here, I, I just wanted to congratulate you, Emily Archer, for winning the President's Award for the American Society of Landscape Architects Virginia Chapter. So, all right. I saw that the other day, and I saw that you were presented the award by PJ Scully. And I just wanted to, as you said, thank you for your work for our city. Also, as you all know, our election system engagement and listening sessions have begun to take place in the community, and, and there are 12 sessions. I believe maybe six or seven of them are left. And if you go to speakoveb.com, you can find times and locations and virtual attendance options, as well as, I believe, one has childcare options as well.
Okay, great. Amelia?
And the last, for Williams Farms, our election is March 30. And the last for Williams Farms, our election is on March 31st. But I wanted to mention the Central Business District. They're having their, at Princess Anne, the internship. Over 120 students are gonna be involved. It's April 6th, and that's the largest they've had, that they're gonna have them out to different businesses. So it's worth coming out to see how many and take part in that. And all council people, just register, it's free for you.
I'm actually taking two interns, so participated for a long time. It's, it's a wonderful event.
Okay, great. Real quick, we had the pleasure this morning to do a news conference and announce that once again, we're gonna have the Ocean Air Show. Last year, 350,000 people viewed that. And when you think about, I think it was 5,000 STEM students, you know, that were accommodated, we, we got a very great point of pride, you know, with the Navy in this town, and, you know, we have a, you know, we as a body and as a community engage them. The other thing is, over the weekend, we had a new novel event at the oceanfront, the Red Bull, little running thing. 150 people, for the first time, showed up. And I don't know if you saw it, but they took some bulldozers and made big mountains of sand and ran an obstacle course over it. Once again, a great thing. But, you know, once again, bringing new and innovative things to the beach. And the other thing is, Patrick, I want to give a shout out. The other day, I went to the landfill at Jake Sears. What a remarkable improvement they did out there. And when you go there, that is a valuable, you know, you know, asset to our community to go out there, but it looks like they got the one silo tapped out and, but I'm telling you what, in the spirit of the people that worked there, I'd like to give them a letter of recognition and go out and present it to them sometime. They were just helpful to anybody that came there. So kudos to them. Okay, at this point, okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. Code of Virginia is mended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disappointing or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237A1. And that's council, appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. So have a motion. Motion in a second.
Congressman Berlucy.
Aye.
Congressman Holt.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are recessed into. Okay, motion in a second. Okay? Are we ready? Rocky. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you all very much. Great meeting. We're adjourned.
Thank you.